The invocation, Mr. Andrew Pont, we're gonna let him introduce on the invocation, then he'll follow with the pledge. Mr. Andrew Pont?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the jury. It's a pleasure for me to introduce to you tonight Reverend Jerry Bulonge, Associate Pastor for Our Lady of Promiscuous Catholic Church. He was gonna say some things about me, but I discouraged him from doing that, because I have enough opposition as it is, and so he agreed not to. But it's my pleasure to introduce Father Jerry at this time. Remain standing for the pledge, please.
Gracious God, we come together in the quiet of this December evening to once again recall the many blessings that you extend to us in our community and in our lives. In the great Book of Psalms, we praise so very often, "Ice and snow bless the Lord; dew and rain bless the Lord." Everyone here this evening believes we have praised you enough with rain. We ask that you send your blessings upon this time. We ask for wisdom in the deliberations that take place, and bless the leaders of our community with the great gift of your peace and hope. And as always, we ask this in your living and loving name, for you are God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
Face the colors, all together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Here.
Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Farnham?
Here.
Mrs. Griffin?
Present.
Mr. Guidry?
Here.
Mr. Hassan?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Dr. Mackey?
Present.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Spell?
Here.
Mr. Stelly?
Here.
Mr. Seis is out of town this evening, unable to attend. Mrs. Trimmie?
Here.
And President McMillan?
Here.
I'd ask if you have a cellphone or pager that you put it on silence at this time, please, to not interrupt the meeting. Also, if you'd like to speak on any item on the agenda, if you would bring up the blue slip from the back up to staff, we'll make sure you have an opportunity to speak on that item. Item five, presentation of plaque, Mr. Rex Dansby, in grateful appreciation of his 38 years of dedicated service as a business agent for the AFSCME Council Number 17. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm gonna tell a story on Rex before. Come on, come on up here, Rex. Some of you up here will remember this. It's a good thing, though. I guess I'd been on the jury, I don't know, it might have been two or three months, and I didn't know Rex. I actually knew your son, I've been knowing him for years, but he come up here, I don't remember what it was about. But Rex was not happy that night, I want to tell you, and he let us know about it. And right there, when I left here that night, I thought, "What in the world did I get myself into?" And Rex knew where to find me. He still does. I've been in the same place every day, so he would come, he'd be in my ear every now and then. But it's gotten much better since then, and we hadn't always agreed, but that's okay. We can agree, we agree to disagree sometime, but I would say we've become good friends, and I respect you, Rex, and appreciate the work you done. And even when we didn't agree, I know Rex was always trying to do the right thing, trying to help the people that he represented. That's all he was trying to, trying to do, and you can't blame a guy for doing that. And that's what he was supposed to do, he was doing his job. Let me read this. Certificate of recognition presented by the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury on this 17th day of December 2009 to Rex Dansby, in grateful appreciation of 38 years of dedicated service as business agent of AFSCME Council Number 17, and in honor and recognition of exemplary and dedicated service, as well as untiring commitment and assistance. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. I sure appreciate this on all of y'all. And I know we've come a long ways, I've enjoyed it, like he says, we have some high notes and some low notes. And so, we're doing good, and I'm gonna still be here, I'm gonna still be around you, you don't get rid of me, Chris said. And, but I've really enjoyed working with y'all. And continuing, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Rex.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rex, for all the hard work you've done throughout the years, and we really appreciate you having a guy like you represent the union and always fight for fairness on both sides. Thank you, Rex. We really enjoy that retirement. Item number six, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Vickers?
Mr. President, we have two applications before you, and we recommend they be approved.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Griffin and a second by Mr. Guidry to approve beer and liquor applications. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item six carries item seven. Consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated November 19, 2009.
Move on seven.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Dr. Mackey on item seven. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item seven carries item eight. Take appropriate action as a result of notice being previously provided to owner of the property at a public hearing held on November 5, 2009, ordering said owner to show cause why the structure listed below should not be condemned. And that structure is 906 Prior Street in Mossville.
Move to condemn.
So I got a motion by Mr. Landry to condemn, second by Dr. Mackey, to condemn Mr. Vickers.
Mr. President, I think Jennifer Wallace, I think the jury had asked for a report with respect to the lady obtaining some FEMA approval. I think Jennifer's prepared to give you a little update on that.
Ms. Wallace, if you'd say your name and job position with the parish, please.
Jennifer Wallace, Assistant Director of Advanced Planning. Just very briefly, we did contact FEMA, and they informed us that their last contact with the applicant was in October of 2005, and they've closed out the file, and they are not eligible for any FEMA assistance. And because they can't get FEMA assistance, they also can't get anything from road home.
Thank you. So have you talked to her on this? Does she realize that it was gonna be condemned tonight?
I spoke with her yesterday, yes, and I did tell her that, and she said that she's gonna try to get some quotes from contractors to see if she can get it done before our 30 days are up.
All right. Any other discussion? I have a motion, second for condemnation. Any objection? Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, sub-question. Are you gonna move forward with the condemnation before her 30 days, or is she still gonna get her 30 days?
It takes 30 days for the condemnation to come into effect, so that's, that's gonna be her 30 days period, so we're gonna go ahead and move forward with it tonight. Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am? Ms. Griffin?
Okay, I understand.
Any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item eight carries. Item nine, consideration of approving and adopting the fiscal
On nine, both bullets.
Year 2010 annual budget in accordance with the local government budget. And bullet nine one, I got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Mr. Landry on nine, and all bullets nine one is approve proposed budget for fiscal year 2010 in accordance with the public hearing with the F, held on December 3, 2009, and recommendation of that budget committee. Nine two, amend the fiscal year 2009 budget from those funds deviated from estimated budget revenues and expenditures in accordance with LSARS 391310. Got a motion, second, on item nine, and all bullets. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item nine carries. On item 10, which is to take appropriate action on the vacancy or to discuss parish administrator, I'm gonna ask that we move that to the end of the meeting. Go ahead and conduct this meeting, and then come back and pick that up at the end. I think we may have a motion to
I would move that we do that.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Mr. Landry to move item 10 to the back of the, our last item on the agenda, which I'll have to turn back here and get you a number.
Thirty-four.
After item 34. So we'll move it to behind item 34. Got a motion, second, on moving that. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item 11, consideration of adopting resolution authorizing purchase of property located 9516 Simole Blue Road, Lake Charles through funding received by FEMA Hazard Administration Grant Program to mitigate houses that have flooded numerous times. We got a motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Brain on item 11. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 11 carries. Item 12, consideration of adopting resolution approving consulting agreement between the police jury and Southwood Parks and Recreation Spar and Safety Green, wherein the
Move on 12, second.
Will help qualifying list private investors for the development of the Ripken Project and other associated developments on behalf of Spar and the police jury. Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Mr. Farnham. Any discussion on item 12? Any objection? Hearing none, item 12 carries. Item 13, consideration of adopting resolution approving renewal of joint service agreement
Move on, second.
Between the police jury and the Calcasieu Parish Sheriff's Office for one year, beginning January 1, 2010, for litter abatement along parish right-of-ways. Got a motion by Ms. Griffin, second by Dr. Mackey on item 13. Any, yes, Ms. Trimmie?
I just wanted to speak to this. This has been going on now since, in the late 90s, and it has turned out, I think, to be one of the projects that we, we join with the Calcasieu Parish Sheriff's Office and others to pick up litter on parish roads. I heard what you said. He said, "That's terrible when she gets through Gavin," but it didn't get me for a while. So, thought you was my friend, Francis. But I just want to let the public know that, that this is visible. This is watching the parish work together, and to help control the trash and the litter in our parish. And you can call Calcasieu Parish at 493, is that right? 493 L-I-T-R. Is that right? 493 L-I-T-R. If you see anybody littering, and they're gonna get a little warning letter, they don't have to pay a ticket or anything, but they're gonna know somebody saw them. So it might make them think the next time not to do that. So we're watching out for you, we're watching you. There's a lot of eyes out here in this parish watching, so please don't litter. Keep, keep Calcasieu clean. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trimmie. Is there any other discussion on item 13? Any objection? Hearing none, item 13 carries. Item 14, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the renewal of a joint service agreement between the police
Move on 15.
Department of Animal Service and Adoption Center for Dr. Claude M. Duplessis for professional veterinary services for a one-year period beginning January 1, 2010. Got a motion by Dr., I gotta think it's Mr. Landry?
Dr. Mackey.
Second by Mr. Stelly on item 14. You were right. On item 14, is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 14 carries. Item 15, consideration of adopting resolution approving memorandum
Move on 15.
Understanding between the police jury and well-attacked technical institution in reference to the temporary use of space elsewhere in the McNolia Building at a rate equal to the estimated cost of utilities and custodial services. Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Collins on item 15. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 15 carries. Item 16 Move on 16, second. Consideration of adopting resolution proving cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and Office of Juvenile Justice Services and Family and Youth Counseling Agency for matching funds related to provision of youth leadership development services for a one-year period as part of a grant subbid to Louisiana Disaster Recovery Foundation. I got a motion by Mr. Spell, second by Dr. Mackey on item 16. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 16 carries. I'd also like to, Julio Galan is here with Family and Youth Counseling. Julio, thank you for the great job that you do for our community and for Calcasieu Parish, and thank you very much. Item 17, consideration of adopting resolution approving renewal of service contract between the police jury and Littleton Claim Services, LLC, for claims of administrative services for workers' compensation claims for a period of one year, beginning January 1, 2010, ending on December 31, 2010. Got a motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Guidry on item 17. Any discussion? Any objection?
Move on 18.
Second.
Item 17 carries. Item 18, consideration authorizing distribution amount of $1,500 for a second 2009 installment of Riverboat Recreation Endowment Funds to each of the following qualified community centers and playground districts of the recreation in Calcasieu Parish. Got a motion by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. Spell on item number 18. Mr. Andrew Pont?
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian, is everybody, I say everybody, are all the recreation districts on board to receive fund now? That we still have some out there that are still not?
You may have to answer that, Mr. Andrew Pont, but it's that requirement that you have to have a source of funding internally to match. I think most or all are, but I'd like confirmation from Tammy, if she could hear.
I know when we first started, it was only a handful, and they started coming on board. I just wondered if everybody was on board, man.
I think they're all there.
Okay.
If you'd come to the mic, microphone, if you don't mind, just so everybody at home can also hear what we're saying. State your name and your position with the parish.
Tammy Buffkin, Assistant Finance Director. There's only one that doesn't get funding right now, it's Recreation District 1 of Ward 8. The rest, it's
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Buffkin. All right, I got a motion, second, on item 18. Any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 18 carries. Item 19, consideration of adopting a resolution approving right-of-way agreement between the police jury as grantor and the city of Lake Charles as grantee for the right-of-way on Henderson Bayou Road on Preon Lake Park property related to water and sewer services. Got a motion by Mr. Brain, second by Mr. Landry on item 19. Discussion? Mr. Brain?
Alan, can you just give me some clarification on that? What?
Sir, I'd be glad to. This is just a request for the city to extend their sewer and water lines. This will run down Henderson Bayou Road. They actually gave us a credit for the exchange. We're actually gonna be able to tie in, get any water, things like that, at a credit because of this, so it's a good deal for us, and it's gonna extend the service to those citizens just west of the park.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brain. Is there any discussion, other discussion, on item 19? Mr. Landry?
No. Mr. Brain said that I didn't have any. I think he tried to put him on the spot. I just had a, I just said, "Well, he made the motion, I didn't."
Okay, all right.
The clarification was for the rest of us.
Thank you, thank you very much. I got a motion and second on item 19. Any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 19 carries. Item 20, consideration of adopting resolution approving a request
Second.
Of the city of Lake Charles that the police jury and city enter to a joint, enter into a joint service agreement, providing for the police jury to utilize quick-take authority, expropriate the right-of-way from the Bailey Vincent Doran Trust, trustees Mary Nan Doran, Bailey Vincent Doran, and the Mary Nan Doran Trust, trustees Mary Nan Doran and Bailey Vincent Doran, for the intersection of improvements at Preon Lake Road and Lake Street. I got a motion by Ms. Trimmie, second by Dr. Mackey on item 20. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 20 carries. Item 21
Move to approve.
Consideration of adopting resolution accepting Ravenwood Phase 3 subdivision located on East Robin Way, contingent upon developer providing a security and acceptable amount to the parish. I got a motion by Mr. Spell, second by Mr. Scott on item 21. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 21 carries.
Move on 22.
I got a
Second.
Item 22 is consideration of adopting a resolution amending the fee schedule utilization by the Division of Planning and Development, including development permit fees for attached and unattached residential accessory buildings and farm structures. I got a motion by Mr. Farnham, and second by Mr. Spell on item 22. Discussion, Mr. Stelly?
No. I had the second, but it doesn't matter.
That's what he had written. The second by Mr. Stelly, thank you. Mr. Landry?
I was just gonna comment that the fees actually went down. That's a good thing. That doesn't happen real often. Mr. Vickers, that's a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Any other discussion on item 22? Any objection? Hearing none, item 22 carries. Item 23, consideration of adopting
Move on 23.
Approving the renaming of the newly dedicated public road located off Highway 90 East from Jeremy Lane to Park Ridge Lane. I got a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Collins on item 23. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 23 carries. Item 24, consideration of adopting resolution confirming that the Calcasieu Parish will assume full responsibility for the required local match for design, engineering, construction
Move to approve.
Administration and testing, managing and maintaining a project for any legal liability occurred as a result of the project on Cooley Road Sidewalk Project in Ward 1, which has been awarded funding through the Transportation Enhancement Program. Got a motion by Mr. Spell, second by Mr. Collins on item 24. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 24 carries. Item 25, consideration of adopting resolution authorizing the president of the police jury to execute the necessary documents for accusation of right-of-way
Move on 25.
Anthony John, Adolf Kitter, Clarence Ann Richard, Johns, Edmund Glenn Berry, Jerry Olin Bunch, Mary Ellen Lejeune, Douglas Beard, Deborah LaBoire, Janet Brown, Jack Beard, James Dickens, and Barbara Dickens on Edgerly Road in Ward 4. Motion by Ms. Trimmie, second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 25 carries. Item 26, consideration of adopting resolution approving agreement between the police jury and Energy Gulf States Louisiana LLC to raise existing transmission facilities on lines located at 295 and 296 South I-10 West State Highway 1256 for South I-10 Frontage Road Project in Calcasieu Parish, being responsible for reimbursing Energy Gulf States Louisiana LLC for all related costs estimated at $92,000. Got a motion by Ms. Griffin, second by Mr. Guidry on item 26. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 26 carries. Item 27, consideration of adopting resolution authorizing the president of the police jury to execute a letter of no objection between Calcasieu Parish and Energy Gulf States Louisiana LLC
Move, second.
For construction of, of South I-10 Frontage Road. I got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Dr. Mackey on item 27. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 27 carries. Item 28, consideration accepting 2009 renovation
Move on 28.
Of existing third-floor library to courthouse function. Calcasieu Judicial Center project is substantially complete. I got a motion by Mr. Farnham, second by Mr. Collins on item 28. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 28 carries.
Move on 29, second.
29 is consideration accepting Calcasieu Parish Project 2009-06, all the various roads in Ward 5. I got a motion as substantially complete. A motion by Ms. Trimmie, second by Ms. Griffin on item 29. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 29 carries. Item 30
Move on 30.
Take appropriate action on bids received by the parish purchasing agent on December 8, 2008, for the security window replacement project at the Office of Juvenile Justice Services. Agenda of project architect and staff recommends a low bid of about $73,350 of security incorporated be accepted. I got a motion by Dr. Mackey, second by Mr. Scott on item 30. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 30 carries. Item 31, consideration authorizing parish police jury agent
Move on 30.
To advertise for
Second.
Bids for metal sign, post, pavement markers, signed blanks, signed face, and sheeting metal, and category 6 FTP cable. I got a motion by Mr. Collins, second by Mr. Farnham on item 31. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 31 carries. Item 32, consideration of authorizing the parish purchasing agent to advertise for mosquito-controlled chemicals. Your motion on 32?
Move, no move.
Motion by Mr. Farnham, second by Mr. Stelly on item 32. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 32 carries. Item 33
Move on 33.
Consideration authorizing parish administrator to advertise for bids for Calcasieu Parish Project 2010-1 overlaying various roads throughout Ward 3, project number 2010-02 overlaying new construction of various roads through Ward 1, 2010-03 overlaying new roads and construction of various roads in Ward 2, 2010-04 overlaying various roads in Ward 4 north of I-10. Calcasieu Parish Project 2010-1 overlaying various roads in Ward 4 south I-10, project number 2010-06 overlaying various roads in Ward 5, Calcasieu Parish Project 2010-07 overlaying various roads in Ward 6, and Calcasieu Project 2010-08 overlaying various roads in Ward 7, and Calcasieu Parish Project 2010-09 overlaying various roads in Ward 8. I got a motion by Ms. Griffin, second by Mr. Landry on item 33. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, item 33
Move on 34.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. Spell, which is consideration adopting resolution and condoneses be forwarded to the family of Hector San Miguel. And Dr. Mackey put that on the gen, on the agenda, and of course, we all know that's Teresa, husband Hector, who just passed away last week. They had a fundraiser today, by the way, I do have a motion, second, under discussion. I'd like to say they had a fundraiser today at Old Charlie's, where, Adam, $7,000, how much?
$7,400.
$7,400 were raised for Brian Gilbo and Hector San Miguel at a two-hour fundraiser, and it was just tremendous support throughout Calcasieu Parish, and the folks really stepped up. I have a motion, second. Any other discussion on item 34? Any objection? Hearing none, item 34 carries. Before we go to item 35, Mr. Andrew Pont had asked for a personal, or item 10, Mr. Andrew Pont had asked for a personal privilege. Mr. Andrew Pont?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think in the, in the spirit of appreciation for the employees who support us and work for us all year long, I think it would be appropriate, and I'm gonna put it in the form of a motion, that Christmas Eve be granted with pay.
Second.
I got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont to give the parish employees Christmas Eve off with pay, December 24 this year, isn't it?
That's a Thursday, a week from today.
Thursday.
I seconded it.
Thursday, and Ms. Trimmie seconded it. Is there any discussion?
That includes the high echelon, too, that just doesn't include the
Any objection? Hearing none, that motion carries. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to compliment you and Mr. Brain tonight. Y'all kind of meshed, y'all worked together very well. It is the last meeting of the year, but y'all did manage to get it. You did not call him Mr. Brain, not one time tonight, and he actually got almost all of the motions and seconds correct. So congratulations to you both, you've done a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. It's been quite an honor to serve this jury in the past year, and
We'll talk more about that in the January meeting, but
It's been quite a challenge for me, though.
This is the first time I've had him on track for an entire meeting. I'm so, in fact, I even doubted him once tonight, and he was right.
He was right, yes, sir.
Great job, Mr. Brain, and glad to get the handle on this, December 17. So, let's go back to item 10.
So, let's go back to item ten. And we do have one speaker, Mr. Atherton, and asks to speak on item ten. We'll get to that as we... Item ten is take appropriate action to develop a procedure fulfilling the vacancy to be created as a result of the impending retirement of the Parish Administrator, Ex officio, Secretary Treasurer, and a formal approval of the qualifications thereof. I need a motion, I guess.
Move to discuss.
Move, a motion to discuss by Mr. Fornum.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Andrew Pont, discuss item ten. As y'all all know, uh, we tried to have this meeting last Thursday, but due to Francis and Sandy being out of town with the, uh, uh, representing, representing us with the state, we decided to move it to tonight's meeting so we could have a, a full form of jurors. And Mr. Seuss, although he's not here, he's, uh, he's, he hates it he couldn't be here tonight, he was having surgery on his eye, but, uh, we will visit with him and we'll keep him on track on everything that went on in tonight's meeting. So, uh, we, we know that he would like to be here. So, with that being said, uh, I guess the first thing that we need to do is to kinda go through the job description, uh, was item number one that we kinda looked at and we deferred till we had had this meeting. And guys, this is, we're plowing new ground. We, we've all have opportunities to visit about this and open forum, talk about it, and see what direction we wanna go with this opportunity that we have. So, um, I think that we first should make sure that we're clear on the job description. We did have staff, uh, under the recommendation, uh, of this jury, kinda give us what they felt should be the, uh, job description, and I think y'all have had a week or so to study through it. And I think that would probably where I would open the debate up tonight with the job description that you had in front of you, uh, maybe get some input from this jury to see exactly what, uh, y'all feel is, uh, description of this job would entail and how you feel about the job descriptions that you've seen. So, Mr. Spell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, after reviewing it, I think it's a very thorough document and very well put together. However, um, I would like to propose, uh, two revisions. The first, and I could be incorrect, but I think we need to establish that residency in the parish will be required as part of, uh, employment. Uh, second, um, under education and experience, um, I would like to propose that, um, in addition to what is written, uh, we revise it to also include a master's degree in public administration, business administration, or a master's level degree in combination with experience in management of parish government operations. And I would throw that on the floor for discussion, Mr. President.
Okay, could you say it one more time so we're all straight on that? I was...
A master's degree in public administration, business administration, or a master's level degree in combination with experience in management of parish government operations.
I would second that.
Well, I tell you what, uh, right now, why don't we just keep it, I don't know if we need a form of a motion on that under just discussion, because we have, we have a motion on the floor to discuss this, so, uh, I think, uh, and let me get this straight. Basically, what, what you're saying, if I'm interpreting this right, is not only, uh, public administration or business administration, but anyone with a master's degree. Is, is that, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm asking that.
If, if I may, Mr. President, we'll explain. Um, after reviewing the, uh, the job description and qualifications, um, I was in one hundred percent agreement with a degree in public administration or business administration. I think, I think that should be one of the requirements. However, after reviewing the qualifications and the adminis- uh, the educational experience, I, I just felt that it was leaving out, uh, a segment of people that could be considered highly qualified for the position, uh, not having a degree in public administration or, uh, or business administration. And if I could give an example, um, the way it is written, uh, and I say this with the utmost respect, um, Mr. Rodney Vincent, who served as Parish Administrator for twenty-six years, would not have qualified for the position. So, I just felt that we needed to provide a little more latitude as far as the availability of applicants, so, um, that is why I'm proposing that change.
All right. Discussion, Mr. Hassan.
Not so much a, thank you, Mr. President, not so much of a discussion, but just a clarification, maybe even a suggestion. Should we break this into two different parts, a job description and agree on that, and then the qualifications are basically the criteria for which we're gonna accept, uh, resumes? Because we went right into the qualifications. Well, they're actually... Right. I, I guess my question is, are we in agreement on the job description that's put before us? If so, I think we move forward to the qualifications.
Why don't we take them separate from each other?
That's, that's what I was suggesting, that we take those two separate.
I think that would be a good point, take those two separate.
And we need the job description before we jump into the qualifications, is all I'm asking.
Okay. Well, we've already jumped into the qualifications. All right, I tell you what, uh, Mr. McMurray, I'll call on you on, on, did you have something?
Well, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I don't understand, Ellis, uh, the, the qualifications are part of the job description, and I think what Mr. Spell is doing is wanting to amend that education and experience, uh, paragraph under qualifications in the job description so that the job description basically is, is descriptive of the, of, of the qualifications for the position. And I do have a question later about that, but I mean, if it...
Okay, we got a lot of folks that would like to speak, so...
I'm through.
Okay. With that being said, I'll let you go back and just, Mr. Spell?
Just to clarify, Mr. President, after reviewing the document, I'm a hundred percent supportive of all of the content, so, I mean, these are the only issues that I, I present to my colleagues. So, as far as job description qualifications, I mean, I'm, I'm one hundred percent comfortable with the remainder of the content, just for clarification.
Thank you. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Hassan, we have kinda jumped ahead. I'd rather take it one section at a time instead of jumping into qualifications. And I, when you get down to those qualifications, I know a whole lot of people that are a lot smarter than me that don't have a master's degree. Not that that's not preferable, and not that you would not wanna list those things, but when it gets down to it, what if there's somebody that's very qualified, and they may meet everything up, but they might have a master's degree? Which, that happened to the Porter Lake Charles here some time ago. The guy ended up not having the, the education that they thought he had, or well, I don't know what all happened, but he ended up doing a good job for him. There may be somebody, I, I would use this as a guide, and that's not in stone, is what I would do. You may have an individual that's exceptional in other areas, obviously, they're gonna have to be educated, or they wouldn't really qualify for the job. I wouldn't get into certain degrees, obviously, this is the perfect degree to have for this job, and if you do have that, you're gonna probably have an advantage over someone else, but I wouldn't, I, I don't feel comfortably, comfortable being locked into a certain type of degree. Mr. McMurray, I think, don't, I know we've spoke before, don't you have a degree in theology?
A bachelor's degree.
A bachelor's degree, and let's just say, for instance, you had not gone to get that, and I know that, that's kinda made you who you are to get that other part of your education, but, I mean, he was a pretty smart fella, and he had a degree in theology. And I'm, the rest of his education that he got, I know, did help him do his job here, but he's still a smart guy, and he could've done a great job, maybe even without his master's degree in public administration. That's all I'm saying. I just, I don't wanna be in a position that I'm locked in and somebody that may be worthy of the position in all other areas, and then, oh wait, they don't have a master's degree in public administration, or whatever other degrees that you mentioned. I don't wanna be in that position. I'd just rather it be a guide to go by. And obviously, we would definitely lean in that direction because it matches the job.
All right, and we'll keep that written down here, that we'll come back to that. And, uh, Ms. Griffin? Thank you, Ms. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Fred, not so often, Chris, but I disagree with you on this. I, I really think that we should have a very high, high standard for this. This is my personal op- uh, opinion. I think that they should have a master's degree. But I didn't get that other degree you wanted to add, because we had two here. You had, uh, public administration and business. What was the other masters?
Well, the two that were listed originally were a mast- if I may, Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Spell. And, and Ms. Griffin, I think I could answer on his behalf, too. I think any master's degree, basically, is what you said.
Well, the, but the intent was is that I do believe that having a master's degree would be good, but I think it needs to be qualified, that if you have another master's degree in another area, that you need to qualify that with experience in management. So, I, I don't think that we should just throw it out there that any master's degree is okay. I think that if you have another master's degree, that you should also at least demonstrate some experience in a management capacity.
My question is, what other master's degree would you like to add to the two that's already listed?
Mr. Spell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I would be concerned, Ms. Griffin, that if we tried to specify an additional curriculum, that we might get into the situation where we're putting thirty different master's degree on, on the docket. So, you know, if a person has a master's level degree, but also demonstrates experience in the management of parish government operations, I believe that they should be allowed to apply.
Well, I, I, Mr. President, may I?
Yes, Ms. Griffin. You have the floor.
I, I, uh, I am in support of what's written here, because I think public administration and business administration with the other criteria that's listed, listed is what the parish needs, because you have to have a business background, because this is a business, and we're a policymaking body, and a person with, uh, masters in either of those degrees that's listed here, they should have the training to deal with that. That is my, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to see it stay as it is, and before this is over, where if, if everyone doesn't agree, I'd like to call a question on it.
Yes.
But I like just what I'm seeing. I, I, you need somebody with experience in business, 'cause this is a business, so, you know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I, and, and we will, Ms. Griffin, we'll make sure.
And this is just my personal opinion, that's a very good idea, Shannon. It would leave people open, and you know, I have this thing about bringing everybody in if I can. I don't have a problem with that, but since we're dealing with, uh, administrative policymaking body that is looking for sometimes, uh, experience, and sometimes, uh, we look for advice, even though sometimes you may not accept it, from an individual who's been trained in that area. So, that is what, where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Mr. Andrew Pont?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just wanna go on record, uh, when we get to that point, I need to discuss, uh, issue on the communication skills, to make a bit of that.
Communication skills.
We don't have to do it now, we're gonna follow chronological order.
I guess, I think so. All right. Mr. Fornum?
I'm supportive of what, uh, Mr. Spell said, because in conjunction with the experience that we're, we're requiring, it would allow that person to have to have the experience in the management areas that we're looking for. So, that's, that's why I'm supportive of the, of pretty much any master's degree qualified in conjunction with the experience level that we're requiring of them.
Thank you. Okay. Maybe in hindsight, we might ought to take this a page at a time, or a bullet at a time, start, a word at a time might be better. Let's go back to the front page, to the summary. I'm gonna try a little different approach on this and see as we, as we go through this unplowed, uncharted ground and water. Under the summary paragraphs, the five paragraphs there, let's discuss that, and then we'll move to the next, and then we'll move to the next, and we'll take this a step at a time. Okay? All right. Unless we need to, is there's any problems with the job titles and, uh, everything else up top is good?
Point of order, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
We have a motion and second on the floor.
To discuss.
Well, I think a motion and second was made on my proposal. I would like to...
Well, I don't think, no, it wasn't. Point of order is, no, it wasn't. We got one motion on there.
Okay.
Okay. The motion is to discuss, and that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Yeah, and really, I would appreciate no other motions till we get our discussions done, and then we'll take, we'll take the motions one at a time and, and vote on those in a progressive way, once we kinda open up all the, the, uh... Mr. Hassan?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm not making a motion. I, I was just suggesting as earlier, just to simplify this process, that if we all are in agreement on the first two pages, that we say so now and move on. Well, then, that's what...
I don't think we are.
How do we need to break this down?
Well, we're gonna break it down by sections.
Okay.
We're gonna start with a summary.
Okay.
Okay? And then we'll go to the essential duties and responsibilities, then we'll go to the supervision, uh, supervisory responsibilities, and then we'll, just ever, ever topic headline that we have here, we'll go through that, if that'll be okay.
Okay.
All right? So, under the summary, and I know we do have some folks that, uh, in fact, Mr. Landry has some stuff underlying right here, that's why I think we need to take it on, uh, on the approach. I don't feel as if I need to read that to y'all. I think y'all can read what you're, what's in there and have read it. So, with that being said, Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. My issue in the first, uh, section there in the summary is, it talks about the appointment for positions of treasurer and secretary, which we discussed that, I guess, at our last meeting, and that motion did pass that upon Mr. McMurray's retirement, that Mr. Milner will be the treasurer, which I'm assuming, will Mr. Milner, uh, answer directly to this jury, or will he go through the position of administrator? I don't know that we'd really discussed that before and, and exactly how that's gonna work. It, it doesn't say that here, but that's not the way I understand that paragraph.
All right. With that being said, I would go to, uh...
And also, if, if I'm, the secretary position was also brought up, I know, Ms. Griffin, there was some discussion on that, so, I mean, before we go any further, we need to decide, I think, on, on what, how we're gonna address those two positions.
Ms. Trimmie?
Uh, prior to, um, Mark, uh, becoming exi- ex officio treasurer and secretary, uh, we had, um, Jennifer Smith, who was our secretary. She was, uh, she still is a wonderful lady, but she did an excellent job in working with each one of us as jurors in, uh, kind of, uh, educating us, uh, uh, you know, of how to do things, what to put on, what not to, uh, when it was appropriate, when it may not be appropriate, that type of thing. But we could sit down there, and she had the experience to be able to guide us. She was an extra guide without bothering, uh, anyone else. I feel that the, um, the treasurer, uh, and it's been said by this group and by all jurors prior to us that have been here since Jerry Milner has been here, and since Tammy Bufkin has, since he stole Tammy from wherever it was he stole him, that great precious lady from, that, um, that he would, is a class act, and he would make a wonderful treasurer. And I feel like that that gives some separation for us as a police juror, that, you know, without asking for any other thing, we can just go sit down with these people, and they can give us guidance. And, uh, the administrator has so many other things to do, I would like to see the treasurer and the secretary actually be hired by the police jury, a separate appointments. You have the administrator, it was like that in... It was like that in nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-three, nineteen ninety-four. It worked wonderful. When Roy Austin, Leroy Austin, who was the Treasurer left, and then when Jenna Beth decided to retire, then Mark suggested that he just take both of those positions and be ex officio. But those people are directly answerable to the Administrator. And I just feel like that our police jury is losing something here. And I would like to see us take some of that back on behalf of the people. That's, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion. Ms. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleague from Dequincy, I'm in agreement with you. I, I really feel that it would be a progressive movement for us if we would take those two titles from under administration. I think that it would be good for the, for the parish, and it would be good for the perception that is out in, in really the whole state and the parish. It would be a good move, a wide move. It would show that we have vision. I think that there is not a need in the twenty-first century for this. I think the Treasurer and the Secretary should be separate. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Other discussion on that? Well, we're discussing the separation. Any other discussion on that? So, from a consensus of what I'm hearing from this jury, without a motion and a second, do we feel like those positions need to be separated? And do we feel like we need to go out for applications for those positions also? Or just do that on an appointment? In-house.
We have what we need.
An evil idea. Ms. Griffin?
We have people that's filling those positions right now. Mr. Milner is already, I thought it was already agreed that he, that he would take the Treasurer's position, and we have a Secretary who's been actively doing that work for many years since Jenna Beth left. So I don't think there should be a need for us to go out. That's my opinion now. And when we get to an issue like this, I would hope Mr. President will ask us to call for a motion. We need to vote on it.
Well, and that's why we'll get a little more discussion, make sure we're all kind of in a consensus with, are we going to, you know, just move forward with the in-house with Mr. Bilder and Kathy to go ahead and do with that with Madam Secretary, or with that.
I would make a motion to that effect.
Second. I got a motion by Mr. Landry to go ahead and separate them. What would your motion be if you were?
My motion is to separate them. They would be appointed by the police jury and answer directly to the police jury.
Okay. And at this point in time, is that motion also include to go ahead and name those people? Or you just want to separate those?
We, we named the Treasurer at our last meeting. I don't think, we named him, but we didn't really clarify that he would answer to us.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Who made the second? On that motion?
Mr. Collins.
Mr. Collins. All right, so discussion on that motion, okay? One motion at a time, we want to discuss this. Ms. Trimmie?
Yes, I feel the same way as Ms. Griffin, and I think that Kathy Smith should continue to serve as our Secretary, but she would be appointed by the police jury.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. All right, under discussion. Mr. Scott.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McMurray, but whenever we spoke about the Secretary at our last meeting, the reason that she was underneath you or appointed by you was so that she would not be liable for a lot of the recording, that more or less the responsibility would fall on you. Am I correct in?
That was, wasn't the only reason, but yes, that was, that was among the reasons, is that the law making the Secretary responsible and liable for compliance with the, all the requirements in the state law, it just shouldn't, it needed to be, you know, on a separate, on a different set of shoulders, we thought, you know.
Mr. Smith, does this by, by separating like this, does the responsibility get a lot heavier on Ms. Kathy at this point?
My answer to that is, I really don't know what statutory responsibilities devolve to a separate Secretary or a separate Treasurer of a, of a police jury. I don't know the answer to that.
All right.
I would assume if Mr. McMurray says that, that there are, that they are out there, and that she has responsibilities that she doesn't now carry, I would assume the answer's yes.
So I think it'd be a little premature, this body, to ask Kathy to even do this job without finding out what her responsibilities are about to be, and if it warrants. I know when I get, I expect money for my responsibilities. That's the way, the more I do, I expect to get paid for it in my business, and I would expect that if we're going to ask Ms. Kathy to do something, we don't just jump into something and say, are we going, are you going to do this? We're naming you that, without at least talking to her on the side?
All right. Thank you. I think we might be able to get a little bit of clarification from our Administrator. Mr. McMurray?
Well, just one quick reference on that. Kathy fulfills all of the obligations that the state law requires of the Parish Secretary. The Parish Administrator right now, as the ex officio Secretary, is responsible if those are not met. But she does it all. I don't, you know, I, she puts a resolution in front of me to attest to the signature of the President of Police Jury, and I sign it. She does the work. So she is carrying those responsibilities on my behalf by virtue of my contract, but I am held legally responsible for that. Thank goodness she is as good at doing that as she is. I don't have to worry about not meeting those, those requirements. Anybody carrying the title of Parish Secretary, however, will be fully responsible for meeting those requirements.
Mr. Scott? Ms. Trimmie, I've got a bunch of people on the list that Mr. Bream had asked first.
It's time for me to go take a break while y'all play your games.
I'll be back in a second. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just sitting here and absorbing what I'm, what everybody's saying tonight, and we're on the, the appointment of the Finance Director of the Treasurer, and, and what I'm hearing is that pretty much agreement of this jury is wants to go ahead and appoint in-house and keep, you know, keep the people that we have in-house. And I guess what's going through my head is, why aren't we doing the same thing with Brian Beam here, and just going ahead and, and doing an in-house appointment instead of going through all this process? And so I'm just absorbing that through this meeting here and listening to everything that's said, and we're, we're, we're saying two different things. We're, we're saying that, well, we, we don't want to hire out anybody outside for our Finance Director or our Treasurer, but we want to go out for applications for Assistant Administrator. So I'm just trying to absorb that, absorb that and figure out why we don't do what my motion was last week, and ask for, do you have, you know, give Mr. Beam first choice before we go out for applications. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think we're off on a, these are simply legislatively mandated titles, am I correct? The workload doesn't change, just the ultimate liability changes. And the reason that it was put under Mark was for, for that reason, that he would be ultimately responsible as Administrator. I, I disagree. I don't think we, we, we shift that over. I mean, we're not shifting a workload. We're shifting the ultimate responsibility, which should be at the top. I'm not, I really don't understand why we're even in this discussion right now. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Trimmie?
Thank you. I'd like to say something to Mr. Bream. I don't, from our discussion a few weeks ago, my God, you have turned and flipped.
I have?
Yes, totally upside down. My God, I mean, I've never seen anything like it. And there's others here that were there when you, we talked to you, so I don't know what happened, but I guess you've been praying a lot, that's all I can say. My feeling on this is that except for the last ever how many years that Jenna Beth and our former Chair, Treasurer, this parish got along just great, just the way it was. And it, and it, and it was handled very well. Now, we have Alan Smith, who is, who is one of the finest lawyers in the state of Louisiana. We hope that he will continue with us, but if, if he decides not to, we can find someone that is worthy of that position. And, I mean, we have people that we talk to all the time to make sure that we're doing things within the law, and to make sure we're doing things properly. And this police jury has big shoulders. I don't think that we would ask anybody to do this job that we don't think can do it in a way that we're not going to have to worry about things of that nature. We're going to find that out before. If they have any question at all, they have a lawyer to call and check on. So I just want to let y'all know that I, I think that that is a flimsy argument. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trimmie. Dr. Mackey?
Well, basically, we're talking about a job description for the Parish Administrator, and quite frankly, I think that Parish Administrator should select the Secretary and the Treasurer, and they should be under him as staff, so that there is a top and departments, as opposed to having three separate positions that, that we're choosing. That was the way we did it before. I think this way works a lot better than that, and I'm sorry, Ms. Trimmie, that you don't, but that is your opinion, and this is my opinion. I've watched both sides, and I think this is much better. And that's the way I feel like we should remain. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Mr. Andrew Pott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me preface by saying that I agree with both Mrs. Griffin and Mrs. Trimmie on their position. There's only one question I would like to ask Mr. Landry, if I could, Mr. President. In your motion, make sure I understand what you said, to give the title of Treasurer to Mr. Milner. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'd asked him to let me clarify.
Yeah, I was going to, I was coming to him next, but-
Okay, but you didn't say anything about the Secretary, did you?
No, but I was going to add that.
Mr. Andrew Pott, if you would, yield the floor. I'll let Mr. Andrew Pott, I mean, Mr. Landry go ahead and clarify his motion, and then we can, we can discuss that.
Be most happy to, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Landry.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. The, the reason that I named Mr. Milner is because we already passed that a week or so ago, that it was going to be him. It just wasn't clear of who he was going to answer to, or to me that it was not. And I do agree that, I'm assuming it's going to be Kathy, but what if Kathy says she doesn't want to do it? That would not be fair to her. I mean, I would make the motion that it would be her, or that we at least speak to her. That could be part of the motion, if, if she would be interested in, in doing it. And one other question that I would like to answer is, the, the difference between this, we have an opening for the Administrator. We don't have an opening for what Mr. Milner does or what Kathy does. That, that would be the difference in why we're going outside or taking resumes for the position, because there's an opening there, where there's not an opening in the other two positions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Landry. Now, Mr. Andrew Pott?
Well, if I could, Chris, I would encourage you to amend your motion or add to your motion to include Kathy Smith as the Secretary, along with Mr. Milner being the Treasurer. And that's why, that's my position. I think Kathy deserves the title. Mr. McMurray's already said that she qualifies, and that's indisputable, and so I, you know.
I'll do that.
Okay.
Assuming that she'll accept it. If she doesn't, then we'll-
All right.
Cross that bridge when we get there.
Okay. Thank you.
I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Hassan?
Just a, thank you, Mr. President, just a further clarification, because you did mention the hierarchy with those, all three positions now in your motion now report directly to the jury, not under the Administrator?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Spell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't, I, I have not had a chance to visit with Ms. Smith on this issue. I, I mean, I would, I'm a hundred percent confident that she will continue to do the exemplary, exemplary job that she's doing now, but for me to make that decision, I, I would like to have the opportunity to visit with Ms. Smith about it before I made that decision. So that's my only concern. I can't say I object or support it, but I just feel like I should visit with Ms. Smith before I make that decision. So I just want to express that concern, and I yield, Mr. President.
Question. Hang on just a second. We have a little more discussion. I, I have one quick question for our Administrator. Currently, with the way that it is, how will this, with your experience over the past years, as you've been Administrator, how will this affect the running of this parish to separate these? I'd just like to get your opinion as we make a decision.
Well, given the players that are in place today, I don't think it has a lot of, I don't think it has a lot of effect. I think it could have a devastating effect, depending on who the players are in the future, which is the reason, and I'd like to correct one thing, Ms. Trimmie said, I didn't ask for that. That was asked of me. Mr. Ligio, at the time, was the juror that came to me and asked me if I would accept those two positions. I didn't ask for that. I think it could have an absolutely devastating effect on the organization. You don't find many businesses or organizations that have that kind of divided authority at the top, and it's one of the reasons the jury stated at the time they did that, was they wanted to have one person to hire and one person to fire. One person to hold responsible, responsible for all the administrative activities under the parish. But in specific answer to your question, given the players we're talking about today, between Kathy and Jerry and Brian, you've got people that have worked together for years. They all know each other. They work very well together. I don't think that you, I don't think you see a problem with that. I think you could have a major problem, at the point that one of those departs, major. And I think it's extremely ill-advised for that purpose. Today, it doesn't matter. But look out for the future.
And I guess for clarification, if we're separating these two jobs, where we go with the Treasurer and the Secretary, and you have the new Parish Administrator, whoever that might be, the Secretary, this Financial Director, will still, the Treasurer will still report to the Parish Administrator? Is that what we're saying here? I mean, that's, okay, that's, that's what the clarification is. If we do, if we do a separation, then it'll be a level right at the top. I mean, we, we'll kind of lose a bit of hierarchy there, as far as, the Parish Administrator always had kind of over, overseen what the Parish Treasurer has, and I want to make sure we're clear on that, because it does seem to be a little confusing. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. President. With due respect, I, I missed it being confusing, because it was very simple to me, but, but I wanted to make sure that our reasoning is not influenced by Mr. McMurray, because we've given him the opportunity and the pleasure of advising us and telling us how he, how he feel and what he thought we should do in certain instances. And since we've been doing this now for about two or three meetings, one, I met with him this, our second meeting here, and then a short meeting upstairs with that quote-unquote "group." So I think everybody on this jury knows how Mr. McMillan feels and-
McMurray.
McMurray feels, and I really think that we, I don't want to be influenced, I don't want my colleagues influenced, but we know how he feels, so I don't think there's a need to keep asking him how he feels. That's my opinion, as an elected official. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foreman?
Is this something that we have to act on tonight, on separating this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we're ready to do it.
I, I just don't feel like it's fair to put this on the spot for Kathy's sake tonight, to ask her to do something. I don't know how close she is to retirement, but that's a factor in everybody's decisions in this world, is how it's going to affect their future, and this could heavily impact our future, that we throw this on her tonight. And if she doesn't want to do it, then that puts her in a position where she might not have a job tomorrow. So I, I think it's unfair for us to make a decision on this without having any of her input.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, and I agree. Change the motion to be worded that, for the separation, we've already named the Treasurer as, as being Mr. Milner.
as, as being Mr. Milner, and the secretary to be discussed at a later date. That way, we'll, we can address that later, and it's not putting anybody on the spot. It's just the fact that, do you agree that it should be separated or not? That'd be basically what you both know.
Who was second to Mr. Landry's motion? Madam Secretary, we'll see how good you are. Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, okay with that change, he's separated just to the treasurer. And we still have lots of hands up for lots of discussion. I've heard some folks wanting to call for question, but guys, we may have to pack a lunch and stay here tonight to see how long we need to discuss this. And we're going to do it one bite at a time.
Right.
With that being said, Mr. Underpont was first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, to, to make an observation on what Mark alluded to earlier about, right now, things are great, these people work closely and great together, and one of them leads well. I think this body has enough intelligence to know that we would not give that title to a person who just comes on board out of the, out of the blue. That title can be given to anyone that, that we feel like that's in-house, is qualified to do the job, that works along with other people. So, you give a title, you can take it away, as far as I'm concerned. And...
Thank you, Mr. Underpont. Ms. Griffin.
Mr. President, I agree with Mr. Landry, but that, that word at a later time, I think we need to be more specific. And then, I also, can you also include, maybe I might need a legal opinion, can you also include, whereas we said that if, if Ms. Smith would agree to this, when she retires, as we did for Mr. Milner, then we would revisit that? Or is that too much, to actually put in one? But I specifically, that word at a later time, I don't like that. I, I would like for it to be specific. Next week, tomorrow, the next meeting, but at a later time could be indefinite.
How about at the next meeting? Anything for you, Ms. Griffin.
Oh, you're so kind.
I'm just glad we're agreeing again.
You're so kind.
Mr. Forham.
Point of clarification, I'm just wondering when these separations were going to take place? Is it when, at the end of the current administrator's term, tomorrow?
Yes, at the, to tie in...
So, we have...
With the retirement.
Three and a half months to name this position. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray.
Okay. Discussion on, on that, on separation? Any other discussion? We need a little more discussion, because Mr. Underpont didn't want to vote till he got back, and he had to excuse himself for just a moment. You'll vote on his behalf. Let's see if we can get the proper wording of this one motion on this separation. Madam Secretary, what have you heard?
The motion, as I appreciate it, is to, the paragraph in the job description under discussion, that fifth paragraph, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph under summary, that the position of parish treasurer and parish secretary be separated out of that, that the police jury would appoint those two positions, and they would answer directly to the police jury, and that Mr. Milner be named parish treasurer, and that the naming of the parish secretary be discussed at the next regular meeting.
Mr. Landry.
I believe she got it, yeah.
But this is not to be separated until...
Until Mr. McMurray's retirement.
Mr., which is April 3rd. Is the date on that correct?
Yes, sir.
I think that's the only thing you may have, was the final date was April 3rd.
Okay.
Could you read it back one more time, with all the clarifications, with Mr. Underpont being here? Mr. Underpont, this is the motion we're fixing to vote on.
Okay.
That the positions of parish treasurer and parish secretary be split from the position of parish administrator, that the police jury would appoint those two positions, the parish treasurer and the parish secretary, and they would answer directly to the police jury, that Mr. Milner would be named parish treasurer, and that the position of parish secretary would be discussed more fully at the next regular meeting and a decision made at that time. And all of this would be effective April the 3rd, upon Mr. McMurray's retirement.
Well, they'll vote against it.
You'll vote against it.
All right, under discussion, Mr. Brain, what's, what you, what are you saying?
It's all in one.
It's all in one, one motion. Okay, is everybody clear on the motion? Roll call vote, Madam Secretary. A yes vote would be to go ahead and do what the motion is, and a no vote would be not to.
Yes, sir. Mr. Underpont?
Yes.
Mr. Brain?
No.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Forham?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Guidry?
Yes.
Mr. Hassan?
No.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
No.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Mr. Spell?
Yes.
Mr. Stelly?
No.
And Mrs. Trimmie?
Yes.
There were eight yeses, five nos, the motion carried eight to five.
There we go. So, in the summary portion, we now have that clarification. So, as we move forward to the next section, which is essential, is there any other things we need to discuss in summary? Thank you. Next section, essential duties and responsibilities. As we go through that section, we've read through that, does anyone have any problems with anything written on that behalf that we would like to speak about in this open meeting?
I have a question, Mr. President.
Ms. Griffin.
Thank you. On page two, fourth paragraph, analyze and prepare detailed reports on any phase of departmental activity. I, I'm, I guess I just want clarification, do the department heads do that and bring it to administration for a review? Or do the administration, the administrator, complete this report?
You asking me?
Whoever, whoever the administrator is.
I would, I would, yes, that would be addressed to you, Mr. McMurray.
Thank you. Well, it depends on the, it depends on the report. I mean, I think there are some things that come out of our office that relate to after a meeting with a departmental head that would necessarily come from the administrator's office. There are many things that would come from the department heads to us for us to review and then ultimately get to you. So, it just kind of depends on the issue. I think, you know, I think this is a listing of, of various duties and responsibilities that each and every one of those has some degree of applicability in some cases and not in all.
Is that a clarification for you?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if the administrator was doing all that, or was he just reviewing it? And I think he made that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Landry?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Just to back up just a little bit, I would suggest that we need to have a job description for the treasurer, because that, that needs to be clarified, that that treasurer does need to work with the administrator. Now, if it comes to a point that, that they have a disagreement, that treasurer would give you his opinion on whatever the case at hand and what he believes, and then the administrator may at the time say, you know, I don't agree with him. And then the jury would make their decision on what to do. So, that, that treasurer position, and I don't know if this already exists, but that, that needs to be clarified as well. I mean, you certainly don't want to, and I know we won't have that problem with Mr. Milner, but as Mark said, it could be a problem in the future. You want to make it clear, they do need to work together. But at the end of the day, if there is a disagreement, you, you want to hear what that treasurer believes and what he, he thinks is the right thing to do. But, I mean, that needs to be spelled out, and I don't think that it is. So, just, that may have created a problem that would need to be fixed.
Mr. Forham.
I think we need to go through the same process for both of those positions, in the same fashion we're doing tonight on another night, before April 3rd.
Okay, we can, we can look at doing that on the treasurer position before April 30th, but right now, well, let's just stick to the point in hand. I would, I would say that we, we digest what we have in front of us. Mr. Hassan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Mr. Landry just brought up a good point. We've, we have essentially changed the duties and responsibilities of the administrator, because we've shifted that, you know, before, with those two positions within that hierarchy, he was ultimately, he or she was ultimately responsible. Now, he's not.
Not in matters of finance, no.
That was kind of the question I was asking a while ago, when I was talking about, will there be a hierarchy? Are we changing the hierarchy? Because I feel like you, you still need to report to have one guy in charge, although the treasurer could have his opinion. You still need that one person that makes the final call. Go ahead, Mr. Hassan.
For example, responsible for the administration of the budget process, as well as the review and monitoring of all departments or division budgets. Is that a responsibility of an administrator or the treasurer? I don't know who, I don't, I'm, I'm kind of careful who I want to ask that.
You might like to answer it? Mr. McMurray?
Mr. McMurray?
I think you want your administrator submitting your budget to you. You know, the treasurer's position and the director of finance position is to make sure the books are kept correctly and make sure you're, do everything you've got to do to pass the audit and what have you. The management, the overall management, which one of the key components of, at least what I've always felt like, one of the key components y'all expected of me, was to present you with a budget document that addressed your mission, which was to provide services as expected by the citizens of Caxu Parish and give, you know, obviously, we work very closely with Jerry and with Tammy, and Brian and myself, and Jerry and Tammy, work with the department heads as they submit those budgets. But, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know that there's anything more important than what you expect of me than to submit to you a budget document like we do. And I think you've heard me before say that there's not another local government that I know of that produces a document like the document that you get, that you get every year. So, I mean, if you want to split out and have a parish treasurer that's responsible for basically, I mean, Chris, this would address your issue about a job description for the treasurer. I think what you do is you simply put to the job description that is in place for Jerry today as the finance director, that he also carries the title of treasurer. Bam, that's it. It does it. Because he's doing all of those things that the state would require of a treasurer. And you simply would put that title in that group. You don't have to really change his job description, because he's doing all those things. I think same thing would be true of the recording secretary. You know, you put the title in there, and then bam, it's done. Now, the whole other issue of how the organizational chart appears is something that you will need to address at some point. I mean, I, I guess I'm hearing that prior to April 3rd, stays like it is, but there's a point that, you know, with, with the action that you've just taken, I think that's going to be a new challenge for y'all to work through that. But that's, again, that's for maybe another day.
Mr. Hassan, you have the floor, or you?
I yield the floor.
Okay. Ms. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I don't think it should be that difficult of a problem. I don't think there should be really a big problem with the secretary or the treasurer still, still reporting to the administrator. I just think those names should be separated. I think that the administrator should not carry those two positions, and that whoever would work in those different departments are, be the head over secretary or treasurer, that individual rather. I still think that that individual, because the work is being done by them, reviewed by the administrator, which is what is going on now, that is not new. We're not creating anything. The only thing that I'm suggesting is we remove those two names from under the administrator. Mr. Milner already, he's got his job description. You know, the sec, there is already a job description in place for the secretaries, so we don't have to create anything. Just need to move them from under that. That, that's all. So, and I agree with Mr. Forham, we should discuss that when we...
Thank you.
Whatever your suggestion was, at a later time. No, I don't like later time, before April. Okay, that's good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Mr. Hassan.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just what Ms. Griffin said, that's why I think a few of us on here would have been much more comfortable if our last motion wouldn't have taken those two positions out of the hierarchy, mainly for that reason of keeping the administrator ultimately responsible. And we lumped it all into one motion, and I, maybe that was a mistake.
Thank you. Ms. Griffin.
He referred to me, so may I answer him?
Yes, you may.
I am, I do not agree with your stand and what you're taking. I think we did the right thing with that, because what I'm saying, and I've said all along, was, we have already been advised, and we already agreed about Mr. Milner. Now, the issue at hand is the secretary. I'm saying that I do not want to see Caxu Parish administrator, treasurer, and secretary together. I want, I want them separated. So, I think we did the right thing. We're going to really go back and address this in April, I guess, to get to it. But I think the motion was, I think it was in order.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Mr. Hassan.
Okay, I, just, just to clarify, because I, I just want to understand your position on it. But didn't you just say that you, you would also have liked to seen them separated?
I think I used those words, would like.
I'm sorry. You would have preferred to see them under the administrator, for him to be ultimately responsible?
He is...
Because the way we have it now, they're all three reporting to the, directly to the jury. They're not in that hierarchy.
Well, if the majority...
Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
May I, Mr. President?
And look, I know this can be somewhat heated, but we don't want to get in, in, you know, as point, counterpoint, if we, if we kind of stay within good tones and visiting back and forth with this situation. I'll call on y'all, we'll, we'll work back and forth. Ms. Griffin, you have the floor.
I appreciate you. What I said is that the, the issue came up of all of the different responsibilities and the problems that may occur if, I'm dealing with the secretary, because we've all agreed on the treasurer. My concern is, I don't think that it's going to be big of an issue, as some of us are thinking, to separate those two, because, now, the issue came up tonight, which was new to me, about us appointing those two positions. I don't have a problem with that either, as long as they're not under the administrator. I could go and agree and be comfortable with either way. If they could be appointed by the jury, that is fine. They're under my goal, separate them. Or they could stay in those positions and report to the administrator, still fine. Separate those three positions. That's what I want. Now, when we deal with that in April, I'll let you know my final decision. My goal is simple, remove the treasurer and the secretary from under administrator. That's why we have legal consult, we get in our problem. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you.
And I would, I would just ask, because I, in, in discussion, I would, I would like, with the final, as we remove them and separate them, still in the hierarchy, and I'd asked that a while ago, still in the hierarchy of the parish, that position of the treasurer and the secretary still reports to the administrator, or whoever our new administrator is? Because you have to have, that's what I was saying a while ago, you have to have that appointment. What we voted on didn't happen. That's what, that's what...
You're right.
Then I thought I heard you say a moment ago, you'd like to see them underneath that guy. We could appoint them, but they still, in the hierarchy, would, the parish administrator would be the person to report to. Ms. Griffin.
You are correct, Mr. President. We voted that to appoint them. Did we not?
To separate them.
To separate them, right? Okay. I don't have a problem with that. But it's my understanding that Mr. Forham here suggested, and we were supposed to come back in April and clean all of that up and take those positions and put in the criteria what we wanted. The motion that we just did to separate them, read, read that motion back to me.
Madam Secretary.
The motion that y'all voted on was to separate the parish treasurer position and the parish secretary position from the parish administrator position. The police jury would appoint the parish treasurer and the secretary, and they would answer directly to the police jury. Mr. Milner was named. the parish secretary position from the parish administrator position. The police jury would appoint the parish treasurer and the secretary and they would answer directly to the police jury. Mr. Milner was named.
Right. That's the only thing I was trying to clarify.
And all this is effective April 3rd. The parish secretary position would be discussed more at the next meeting.
I understand, thank you.
All right, Ms. Griffin.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have a problem with that. I am so eager to please either way. Either way is fine, as long as they're separated. If the jury want to appoint it, we just voted on it, fine. If you want to change it and we come back and say, no, let it be under administrator, fine, just separate them. But we have already voted. We said the jury would appoint. They will report to the jury. The majority rules, that's democracy. I don't have anything to say about it and in fact, I'm pleased. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Mr. Stelly?
I have a question for you, Mr. McMillan.
All right.
The treasurer and the secretary, who do they now report to?
What I understand of that motion is to this jury.
Didn't before though, right?
I asked that question. I asked that question to be clarified, but once that motion was, and then hearing further discussion.
Well, with all due respect, I'm not trying to put you in a bind. That is not what you understood, correct?
That's, that's what, that's what I was trying to make a point of is, are we taking the responsibility, final responsibility from that parish administrator?
We have now taken that responsibility, that those two positions now report to the police jury, which is not, I don't think most everybody here had not understood that. I'm not a mind reader, but.
That's what I was trying to clarify.
You hadn't understood, am I right or not? I'm not trying to put you in a bind.
Well, no, no, it's not that I didn't understand. I understood exactly what was happening. I was trying to clarify exactly what we were voting on, that we weren't going to have a point position. We were going to have lateral positions of the treasurer and of the administrator with that vote.
And then at the same time in that vote, we appointed two positions, two names of people, rather than just if that's the way you wanted to do it, or one name, whatever, just that could have been left out completely. We're setting policy here, we're not, those two jobs were not even on, on this agenda. Now we've, which I don't disagree with the position, but that should not have even been part of that motion.
Discussion. Back to the other side. Mr. Underpont?
Well, I was going to say is I disagree with Mr. Stelly in light of the fact that we're talking about the secretary and treasurer job. Now, Mr. Landry's motion was to give the treasurer's job to Mr. Milner. I mean, if we're going to separate him, we've got to give it to somebody, right?
That's correct, but, but right now we're making policy, we're not filling job positions.
Well, that's our job.
Not those two job positions, sir. We're filling the assistant administrator tonight. If you want to change the policy tonight of who the treasurer and the secretary are under, then you're changing policy. But you're not filling those two positions tonight.
Guys, hang on just a second, let me call this back to order. Very intense, very intense. And we all can speak in a good calm language and, and not have to be jousting back and forth. Let's, let's everybody just, you know, just speak clearly, specifically, in a, in a good calm manner and we'll point and counterpoint this thing for as long as we need to. Okay, let me, let me do that. Now, Mr. Stelly, I'm going to go back to Mr. Underpont. We've got a discussion between two jurors and I'm going to keep this very calm and very civil. Mr. Underpont?
Thank you, Mr. President. It says very clearly in black and white, ex officio appointment for positions of treasurer and secretary. I mean, I don't know how much more plainer than that it can be. I mean, what we have to do here, and the motion was in order as far as I'm concerned by, from Mr. Landry, was to give the treasurer's position to Mr. Milner. And then we, we alluded to the secretary's job and it was, the majority agreed that we probably should wait and discuss it with Ms. Smith before we make a final decision on that. So, well, I don't know what the big argument is, but anyway, that's, that's my position, that I think we are in order by doing what we're doing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Underpont.
And we had to put that off because that was not the intent of the paragraph. That's why we had to put it off of the secretary, because the intent was not that to begin with. So, we had to defer it to another time because that was not the intent. Was that your intent, Mr. Landry? Can I ask Mr. Landry, was that your intent?
I'll let you ask Mr. Landry. Mr. Landry, your intent, sir? Mr. Stelly would like to know.
Why, why are they bringing me into this? That's what I was.
Was that really your intent to, was to, to, to fix that position?
Hold on just a second, maybe we, maybe we get some really help from a professional with our legal counsel. I'm going to go, I'm going to go to our legal counsel for, oh, Mr. Smith.
Press back, Millen, what I'd like to do is just do a little, try to do a little summary and keep us on point. What you all are here doing tonight is to decide what the responsibilities of the new parish administrator will be and then what the qualifications should be for that person, whomever it is. You have now taken away as part of the job responsibilities, the secretary and the treasurer positions from the parish administrator. That's been done. Then it seems to me to stay on track, then we move on because the new person who will interview or be hired for this job will no longer have those positions. Then the jury can come back, not tonight, to try to fill them and decide the responsibilities and get the job descriptions for those two positions. I think what we've done is, is we have altered this document to say that the person who will be the parish administrator just simply will not also carry the titles of secretary and treasurer. And I think that's been decided by the motion. And so I think what we need to do is move on with the qualifications and responsibilities of the parish administrator, which is the open position. Is everybody, I mean.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So.
That was easy, why couldn't we have said that?
That's exactly what I was saying. Y'all just didn't hear it. Thank you, counsel. That's why he gets paid the big money. All right. So, Ms. Griffin, it had a question on paragraph four of the summary. I think we got that of the essential duties and responsibilities. We got that answered. Are there any more questions on that section of the job descriptions and, and duties there? If not, I don't know, maybe we ought to take a motion in a second to approve them as written. Motion by Mr. Underpont. Second by Ms. Trimmie to approve that section as written. Any further discussion? Any objection? Check that off. Supervisory responsibilities is our next section. As we read through that, in the supervisory responsibilities.
What about essential duties and responsibilities?
That's the one we just did.
Thought we just did summary.
No, we're through summary.
So, I've been sleeping all this time?
God bless you. Supervisory's responsibility.
Or another planet.
It's all be hands. Mr. Stell?
The first sentence of the supervisory responsibilities, does that, that contradict what we just went over for the two positions of secretary and treasurer? So, those, that, that particular, that first sentence right there is going to have to be either fixed or taken out completely if that's the direction we're going to go.
Good point, Ms. Stelly. Reading that first sentence, the responsibility for overall strategy and operation direction of all departments and divisions under the authority of the Calqueshoe Parish Police Jury, as well as the evaluation and performance of these departments in the term, terms of their service delivery.
And, and, Mr. President?
Yes.
While we're talking about evaluations, are we going to evaluate those two positions that we just took over? Or who is now going to evaluate those two positions?
Why don't we just work on?
Evaluation time comes.
The job description at hand and then we'll, we'll bring that up at a later time. Remember that question. The job description of the, what we're here with the parish administrator.
So, which one we're going to cover first?
I think we're going to cover the, we're going to have some discussion on the supervisory responsibility of the parish administrator.
But that's part of the supervisory administration is the evaluation. So, that's really all one thing. That right, what I just spoke of, that's one thing. That comes under supervisor.
Thank you, Ms. Stelly.
Thank you.
Mr. Farnum?
I think that we need to leave that responsibility under the administrator and we're, and I think before the, the April swap, that we need to adjust the requirements of the financial director and the secretary to match this, to where the administrator does have the final say so on, on strategic planning. So, I, I think it really ought to stay the same. And we'll adjust the other ones at the later time to match this.
Mr. Hasson? Thank you, Mr. President. I think we simplify things if we just all agreed that we would separate the jobs, it would be appointed by the jury and those jobs still report to the administrator. It just makes so much more sense.
That's not what we voted on. I know, but we can discuss that.
Do what?
We're going back. I'm agreeing with you. Mr. Stelly, I'm going to ask you to stay in order.
Okay, that's fine, but I'm.
I'm going to ask you to stay in order, I'll call on you when it's your turn to talk. Mr. Hasson has the floor.
And I know we've already voted on it, but I think there was a lot of things unclear about what, and maybe we should have separated. I think we made a mistake there by not separating those. I'm just, just a suggestion, I think we go a lot smoother through the whole, the whole process from this point on.
Which, as we're coming to the supervisory responsibility, we may at some point, once we finish the discussion, put that in a form of motion and make that a done deal. That could be a separate motion. Okay, as we discuss this. But before we, before I ask for a motion on that behalf, I would ask for more discussion. Mr. Farnum, do you want to speak?
I lost my point.
All right.
I still have the floor.
Decide, anyone? Mr. Scott? No? Mr. Landry?
I mean, just add in that sentence, direction of all departments with the exception of the finance department and, and the recording secretary, which would tie into what we've already passed.
That would put the administrator as being the point position that I was talking about a while ago?
No.
No?
He just said take them out.
Oh, you said take them out?
He says with all departments and then I'm saying add with the exception of the division of finance. And, and that's not, they're not, not to say they're not going to work together. Whenever all these positions were separated before, those, those people worked together. They, they, you didn't have them coming down here with two completely, uh, different ideals. I mean, they, they worked together on a daily basis and I'm sure that they had differences and they worked them out. And, and I think most of the time, they always came before the jury and, and they were united. I mean, I was not here when, Ms. Trimmie, can you comment on that if, if I may?
I'd like to ask this question to, you know, when it worked before, maybe our parish administrator could tell us this, or Ms. Trimmie, but when it worked before, was there a point man or were they, or were they lateral? Or was, you know, how does, how did it work before?
Both ways. Originally, they were completely separate. They answered to the police jury in theory. On the organizational chart, they each had a line coming directly from the police jury. In practice, Mr. Vincent was here, I think Mr. Vincent was seen by the parish secretary and the parish treasurer as the point man, if you want to call it that. That came from practice. I mean, that, that, that came from just observing practice. That was not the, the form of the organizational chart. I think Mr. Vincent, of course, had been here since 1948, so he had been here, oh gosh, probably 15, 20 years before either of the other two came to work here. So, he was already seen as the, as the point guy. But that was not what the organizational chart showed. Now, at the point that Mr. Austin retired as parish treasurer and that title was put as ex officio under the administrator, the jury also took action to place formally the parish secretary who was still an appointed official under the administrator. So, that, which I think goes to the point that Mr. Hasson was, was discussing, is that on the organizational chart at that point, the parish administrator was not just in practice, the point man, he was in fact, the, the sole responsible party for another appointed official. So, that is something, Mr. Stelly is right on, on the mark, that, that is something on, on the first sentence of this, it would need some work at some point. And to tell you the truth, if you're going to, if I were in the position of applying for the job of parish administrator, I'd want to know whether I was going to end up being responsible for the division of finance under an appointed parish treasurer or whether I was not going to be responsible for that. That might have a great deal, that could have a great deal of impact on whether I wanted to apply for that job. So, I mean, I think that's something that will need to be decided at some point on a set of qualifications that if you choose to advertise or whatever you're going to do, I think somebody applying for that job would want to know about that. Because that is, that is a point where some contentiousness at some point could be the case and, and that would not at all be in the best interest of, of the parish as a government or as an operator or organization.
Thank you. Okay. We need some more discussion on this because we need to figure out which way we're going to go on this. Mr. Hasson?
Do we have a motion on the floor right now?
No, we don't. We're still discussing which direction, we want, we could make a motion if you'd like. We'll see if it gets a second.
I would like to make a motion, just point of order. Can I make a motion to amend a previous, previously passed motion?
No, you could put it in, you could put your motion in with under supervision responsibilities, I think would be a good place to put it if you want to.
I would like to make a motion that the appointed positions of secretary and treasurer go back to the hierarchy, reporting to the parish administrator.
Add that.
Is that clear enough?
Motion under the supervision responsibilities, it, under the hierarchy, now this job description we're looking at for parish administrator, he has the final say so over the treasurer and secretary position. Is that your motion?
Yes.
I need a second.
No second. I just want, I have a question.
Yeah, I can't discuss it without a second. You can vote against your, so you can vote against it. I just need a second to discuss that motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stelly. Now, we have discussion. He had the floor first, Ms. Griffin. Mr. Stelly?
Okay, isn't that a complete contradictory of what Mr. Landry's motion was? Somebody who voted for, can I speak?
Yes.
Somebody from that voting side that voted yes needs to bring that motion back to the floor for discussion. Can that be done?
Reconsideration of a motion can only be made, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Reconsideration of a motion that has passed can only be made if a party who voted for the motion moves for reconsideration. A party who voted against it is ineligible.
That's why I asked.
I voted against it.
That's why I asked a point of clarification before that. We wanted to make sure that we were not getting out of a point of order. So, we, we weren't contradicting a, a earlier motion that we had made. So, Ms. Griffin?
I just have to ask, let me ask legal counsel, Mr. President, may I?
Sure.
He needed a second for his motion. If he didn't get a second, what would have happened?
Would have died for lack of a second.
The motion fails if, for lack of a second.
Precisely, precisely. So, Mr. President, with all due respect, you, you made a wrong call. If he didn't get a second, we didn't have to discuss it, sir.
We had a second.
Yeah, you forced a second because you said we couldn't discuss it unless we get a second.
Yes, that's right.
But we didn't have a second and you kept pursuing it. I, yes, you did.
I asked for a second. I asked for a second.
You said we can't discuss it, Mr.?
Under Roberts' rules of procedure, I know that we cannot discuss a motion unless we have a second.
But you didn't.
That's why I ask, if there's a second, then we would discuss it. And Mr. Stelly gave a second at that point in time.
To be able to discuss it.
To be able to discuss it.
Yes, you did, Conser, you did, after you said you needed a second to discuss it, but you didn't get a second until you pursued it. But that's okay, you're the president. But it was, that's why I asked the question. If you didn't get a second, it, it's dead. Unless you keep asking for a second, then you're going to get it.
I asked for a second. I asked for a second and got a second from Mr. Stelly.
Sometimes, many times.
Mr. Stelly?
And, and you asked for a second so I could discuss it, which is why I seconded the motion.
Right. I mean, it wouldn't have had if it, if it would have had a second, if it wouldn't have had a second, it died for lack of a second. So, but Ms. Stelly seconded it.
Mooted anyway, didn't it?
And we still have that, that motion in second under discussion.
It mooted.
So.
He can't.
Improper.
But after hearing from legal counsel, we cannot utilize that motion.
That's right.
How do we withdraw that?
He did ask before I said it.
Yeah, we did, I thought he did too. So, back to the Supervisor Responsibilities. And, the first line that Mr. Stelly brought up, "Over the overall strategy and operation direction of all departments envisioned under the authority of Calhoun Parish Police Jury, as well as evaluation of the performances of these departments in the term of the service delivered." That was the first line that Mr. Stelly had some problems with. Okay, now, we do, that, I guess, is, do we need to rescind that motion, or is, can we just take it off the table?
I'll rescind it.
He rescinds it, he rescinds that motion.
Yes, sir.
So, we still have a motion from the very beginning of this meeting to discuss the summary, or to discuss this job description. So, with that being said, going back to the forefront of this first line or responsibility of, of the Supervisor Responsibilities. I need some, Mr. Forham?
Need some more discussion.
I need some more discussion. See where we're going with this.
See if I can't stoke the fire a little.
Yes, sir.
I think we're all in agreement here that the strategic and operational direction of all the departments needs to come directly from the Administrator. I think, in the org chart world, if you're gonna draw a picture on it, you would have the Finance Director with a line to the Administrator and a dotted line back up to the police jury, where their appointment comes from the police jury, but their day-to-day direction and strategic planning comes from the Administrator. I don't know if that's the way everybody else is thinking about it, but that's the way I'm thinking about it. So. Throw that out on the table for discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hassan, and I'll come to you, Ms. Trimmie.
Thank you, Mr. President. And then, Mr. Forham, as a yes vote, you could make my motion. Because what you just said is exactly what I was proposing. Thank you.
I, I would definitely put that in the form of a motion, because that's the way I understood the first one.
Okay, and let's hear, uh, counsel.
I had my hand up before you go to counsel, babe.
Well, I wanna get a clarification, cause I got a motion on the floor, and that overrules any discussion at that point in time. Counsel?
I think the motion from Mr. Forham would have to be that you reconsider the motion that was passed, which included all of the things that Chris had put in it. And if that passes, then he can make a motion that could be amended, uh, as he has stated, with the direct responsibility being with the Parish Administrator, but the responsibility for the appointment being from the police jury. But I think you have to have a motion first, for reconsideration of the motion that's already passed.
Mr. Forham, you have the floor.
I would say exactly what he was saying.
So, that is a motion. Now, would anybody like to second that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Spell. Now, under discussion, Ms. Trimmie.
Yeah, I thought that Mark put it, uh, put it excellent. Uh, from Mr. Vincent to Mark, when the, uh, the Treasurer and the Secretary were actually appointed by the police jury, but in his words, "They all worked together on behalf of this parish." And they worked hand in glove together for what is best for this parish. Now, uh, when they go in meetings, when, uh, I go in meetings, or anybody else does, we, we all have some kinda different take on something. But in the end, everything comes out first class. And I do believe that our Parish Administrator should, uh, give our, uh, state of the union or state of the parish. I think that that person that takes that position should be the point person, as far as that goes. But I think we're making an issue over something right now that is really a non-issue. So, uh, I think that, that the people that are appointed to these positions are gonna work together exactly like they're working together now, exactly like they did twenty years ago, exactly like they did twenty-five years ago. And that's why this parish is where it is today. And that we're taking over and working with, I'm telling you, one of the number-one parishes in the state of Louisiana. And, we have the best people working for us, the best. I mean, I can tell you from being all over the state, that I have no qualms with saying this, we, we have, we are right on. So, I think that what y'all are talking about is, uh, is trying to make something what it's not. And, and so you're trying to say it's something that it's not. And, our, our Department of Treasurer and our Secretary will work hand in glove with our Administrator. And our Administrator will be the point person. And that's the way it always has been, and that's the way it will be. What we did changed nothing, have to do with that. And I know Ellis is laughing at me, but bottom line is, uh, if you were the Administrator, I think you would like to have someone like a, a Jerry Milner, or someone like a, a Kathy to be working with you and helping you, that has all these twenty-something, thirty years of experience. I mean, all we're doing is trying to let the people of Calhoun Parish know that the police jury is trying to do what's right by the people of Calhoun Parish. And that is all I'm asking, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trimmie. Mr. Scott?
I couldn't agree more, Ms. Trimmie, that this parish is top of the line. Couldn't agree that we got the best people, some with thirty years, some with twenty years, some with fourteen years of experience, that have been running this parish. And, I think we're doing a service to the parish and the people by discussing this and putting it out there. But I won't take up any more time of anyone. Brian has been doing this. He's been part of this system, the one we're trying to say is working so right, but yet, we're here where we are right now, because maybe that part ain't working right, or we're worried about what people perceive us to be. I'm perceived to be who I am right now. And I think the guy's been here the longest. Qualifications, all this is great stuff, residency in the parish, all that, but I'm forgiving Brian the job. I don't have to discuss anymore. I appreciate y'all discussing it for me to help me be a little more educated, but you're, you're not doing much more for me. You're never gonna change my mind, and that's not on behalf of Brian, that's just the decision I've made for the people that elected me, right or wrong. So, thank you, thank you.
Point of order, Mr. President, that is not the issue on the floor.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Going back to Mr. Forham's, uh, motion. Could you, one more time, give some clarification on exactly what you said?
To re- reconsider the previous, uh, decision that was made, to still separate those positions, have them fall under the daily instructions of the Administrator, but report back to the, have a dotted line where their appointments and/or hiring be done by the jury, but still take their daily instructions from the Administrator, and strategic planning from the Administrator.
So, basically, you're saying.
Leaving one man at the top, on a daily operation. You gotta have a boss, a daily boss.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
He put two motions in one discussion. The first one is a motion to reconsider the previous motion that was voted on, which was.
Okay, so, we gotta vote on that?
We gotta vote on that.
Yes or no? Then, if that passes, then he can make his motion, which he just stated about the responsibility.
Let's do that, okay. We've made a motion.
Motion to reconsider.
To reconsider the previous motion. Okay? Second by Mr. Spell. To reconsider the previous motion. A yes vote, we'd reconsider it. A no vote, we wouldn't reconsider. There we go. So, any discussion on reconsidering that vote? Roll call, Madam Secretary.
This time will be a reverse roll call. Mrs. Trimmie?
No.
Mr. Stelly?
Yes.
Mr. Spell?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
No.
Mr. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Gidry?
No.
Mrs. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Forham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
No.
Mr. Brain?
Yes.
And Mr. Andrew Pont?
No.
Seven, six.
Seven yeses and six nos, the motion carried.
Seven yeses and six nos, democracy at its finest, we are now.
Got what you wanted, huh, Bill?
I didn't vote, Ms. Trimmie. There won't be any ties tonight. Now, Mr. Forham, back to you. Your motion.
Motion is to keep the positions separated, have the daily strategic planning and operational duties directed by the Administrator, but those two positions would be, uh, appointed or hired directly by the jury and answered to the jury.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Forham, second by Mr. Hassan. Discussion, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you. Just wanna make sure I'm right. So, you're saying, we're gonna take those two titles from under the Administration in a nutshell? Thank you, sir.
You got it?
Oh, yeah, I got it.
That was quick, I was talking. All right.
Learns fast.
He was being rude to me, Ms. Griffin, he wasn't paying attention. Any other discussion on that? That motion that's now on the floor? Do we have any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Stelly?
Uh, Mr. Forham, you said, "Answer to the police jury." Your last statement was, "Answer to the police jury." Can you explain that compared to the last motion that was on the? I guess if there's some, uh, problems with what they're doing as far as, uh, legalities, they would have to report back to the jury, where we have legal counsel here to address those issues. Mr. President, can I speak directly to you?
Yes, you can, Mr. Stelly.
With that said, you're, you're talking about the Administrator being the reporter to the jury of the problem. In other words, the, the financial sec, the financial guy's not gonna be the guy that's gonna come up here and report to the jury. He will report through the Administrator, who will report to the jury. He would report things that need to be reported, but that, between, like the, like the, uh, budget would be reported through the Administrator to the jury. But if there's a issue legally with their position, that now they carry those titles, those added titles, then they would have to come up here and answer directly to us on any issues that we have with that. Since those titles are being separated. Issues that refer directly to the title that they're now gonna obtain.
Mr. Stelly?
I'm done.
Legal counsel, do you understand? Can you give us some clarification on that?
I'm gonna give it a try to summarize. The sentence that you all are discussing under Supervisory Responsibilities is, quote, "Responsible for the overall strategic and operational direction of all departments and divisions under the authority of the Calhoun Parish Police Jury, as well as the evaluation of performance of these departments in terms of service delivery." As I understand Mr. Forham's motion, that sentence would remain as a responsibility of the new Parish Administrator. When you get to the other two positions, those job descriptions will say that those people have to, uh, respond directly to the Parish Administrator, but they have a responsibility direct to this police jury in their positions as Treasurer and Secretary. The way I understand.
You said it a lot better than I did.
That's, makes everybody clear, everybody clear on that? You good with that? Okay. So, if you vote yes, you're voting for that, and if you vote no, you're voting against that.
Point of order.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Griffin?
President, thank you, sir. All what we've just done, would you repeat that so that the citizens who's gonna look at this or in the audience could know what just happened?
Well, I would ask our legal counsel to do it, because he's pretty eloquent one more time, to let, let him give us exact, uh.
In the original motion, the police jury separated those two job titles and positions from the Parish Administrator. The Parish Administrator is no more ex officio. Question is whether or not the Parish Administrator will still have overall strategic and operational direction of all departments, which would include those two. And so, leaving that sentence as is under Supervisory Responsibilities would mean that the Parish Administrator will have the overall strategic and operational direction of those two departments, as well as all others. But the original motion is that those two separate positions would have direct responsibility to the police jury, and would be hired or appointed directly by the police jury, and not by the Administrator.
Effective April third.
Effective April third.
Good, Ms. Griffin?
I am a happy lady up here tonight.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Soon as we vote on this, sir, thank you.
Any other discussion on that? Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a problem with all of it, but I just picture the, the scenario, if the Director of Finance, or the Treasurer, whatever title you wanna use, has a specific opinion, and it differs from the Administrator, I wanna know what that guy has to say. Directly to me.
Mm-huh.
That's.
He has that right.
That's what he said. Mr. Landry, as I understand it, they will have direct reporting responsibility to the jury under, under your motion.
As long as that, that's the intent of the motion.
Uh, Mr. Forham?
That's my intent with him having so-called dotted line back to the jury, is that he has the right to bring any issue that he feels necessary to report to us himself. He has that right to bring that to us.
Thank you. You done?
Done, thank you.
Ms. Griffin?
Oh, and with the, in, quote-unquote, "The intent," Mr. Landry, and with the intent, Mr. Forham, that needs to be in black and white. That those two positions, that they, uh, can come before the police jury, and that they're accountable to the police jury. That needs to be in writing.
Mr. Smith? How do we handle that?
Well, I think it's already been said. The original motion, he said they have direct, uh, that the, the police jury has direct, I'm sorry, that they have direct responsibility to the police jury. However, their daily activities, their overall strategic and operational direction will be done by the Parish Administrator.
And while we're on, is there any other things in there that we wanna reword in this paragraph? That might be in this motion? Are y'all good with all that? Okay.
Hold up.
I have a motion second on, whoop, Ms. Stelly? That would affect this motion.
Um, responsibilities include furnishing, guidance, assisting, interviewing, and hiring appropriate administrative personnel, doesn't that conflict with appropriate?
Doesn't, doesn't pertain to Finance or Recording Secretary.
I think, well, yeah, I think we're good with that. Just wanna make sure, we all, we all understand that the Treasurer and the Secretary have been taken out of that loop, that that will be hired by the jury. You with that, Ms. Griffin?
I'm fine with that, sir, it's just that, my years up here, I didn't know Administrate, the Administrator, or interviewed and hired everybody that was hired. Okay, that's good news that I could really use, I, I appreciate that. Our Department heads interviewed and hi- recommended hiring. Nevertheless, thank you.
Well, that's a good question. Let's hear, uh, let's hear our administrators' take on that. I'd, uh, I'd ask you, Mr. McMurray?
Obviously, we do not hire every employee in police jury operation.
Yep.
Hire the administrative personnel who have all the leeway in the world to.
Hire their.
Hire the people that they think are appropriate.
Good, I got a motion second on the floor. Roll call vote.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Yes.
Mr. Brain?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Forham?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Gidry?
Yes.
Mr. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Spell?
Yes.
Mr. Stelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Trimmie?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
That's great. All right.
I didn't think that would ever happen.
Good. Turn the page, please. Qualifications. 需要通过适当的措施，让残疾人或有 disabilities 的人员， 进行有效的操作。” Any problems with qualifications, from what y'all see there? All right. I need a motion second to receive that on, on the qualifications.
Just that paragraph?
Just that paragraph. We taking it, black one by black. A motion is second, motion by, uh, second by Mr. Hassan. Is, I don't believe there's gonna be any problems with that, any discussion, any objection that carries. Education and experience. And, this is one we're gonna have some, uh, opinions on, so we'll take it, uh, as it is. I think y'all. I think y'all heard Mr. Spell's comments on that. If anybody else would like to weigh in, we weighed in on that. We can weigh in on it a little more, then we'll take a motion and we'll see if we get a second, and then we'll vote on that. So with that being said, on education and experience, we point, counterpoint on master's degree and not having master's degree. Master's degree with certain amount of experience. If y'all would like to weigh in on some of that, please feel free to do so at this time of discussion. Okay, with Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Going back to the discussion earlier, you would, I guess it would be worded master's degree in public administration or business administration from an accredited college or university would be preferred? Is that how, is that your, was your intent earlier? I know you're wanting to include a master's degree, if they have a master's degree. Because they could have a lot of experience in other areas. So is that, if I may?
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Spell, answer, because, I mean, I'm good with that, master's degree is fine. As long as it's just not, we could say it's preferred in those areas, just like the ICMA is preferred.
Mr. Spell?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Landry. I guess what I'm recommending, Mr. Landry, I do understand your point that you had brought up previously about a bachelor's degree. However, I would say that we're in a position to agree to disagree on that. I do believe a master's degree should be the minimum requirement as far as education is concerned. So if I may, what I am proposing is that the education paragraph reads specifically, master's degree in public administration, master's degree in business administration, or a master's degree in, a master's level degree in combination with experience in management of parish government operations. In other words, if you have a manage, a master's degree in another curriculum, that you should have experience in managing parish government for that to be applicable.
Mr. Landry?
You know, it's hard to agree with, because I was agreeing with you, and then you still thought I wasn't agreeing with you.
You have a point, Mr. Landry.
No, I'm agreeing with you, you changed my mind, that's why, it is very hard to believe. Well, actually, maybe it was Ms. Griffin that changed my mind, but I do agree with master's degree. We'll scratch the other, so I do agree with you, as long as it's just, it can be other master's degree, which is what you said.
Yes, sir.
Is that a motion?
I wait, and only under.
And how many years' experience? Would you clarify that, one, I mean, six months could be experience, I don't think that's what you're talking about.
The purpose of me putting that qualification of experience, the intent of that is to kick it down to the experience paragraph below, which I agree with. A minimum of ten years of progressive supervisory and administrative experience, preferably with a local government agent, and at least five years of such experience in the chief of, as capacity as the chief administrative officer or assistant chief administrative officer or equivalent management level. I have no objections to that experience requirement. But I do believe it's inappropriate that if someone has a master's degree in underwater basket weaving and no experience in management in parish government, I do not believe that they would be eligible or qualified to serve in the administrator position.
Very good, is that a motion?
If the president is at the point that he feels comfortable accepting motions, I would be more than happy to put that in the form of a motion.
Good, I'll take that motion, Mr. Spell. Second by Mr. Landry.
Whoop, I didn't miss.
Yeah, it's quick, almost quick enough. Discussion, Mr. Forham?
I've got one point of clarification. Our equivalent management level experience, is that, would that pertain to like one of our own department heads would be an equivalent management level? That's the way I'm understanding it, I just want to make sure that's right.
I would think so, I would, it's experience from a department head.
It just says equivalent management level, I'm not sure what equivalent management level equals these two positions as a administrator or assistant administrator. It's pretty much what the first two do. Is a department head an equivalent management level as, as an assistant administrator, maybe is what I'm asking. Can anybody answer that? I don't know who to ask it to. Legal counsel would, would that qualify?
At this point, you know, all I can give you is, would be my interpretation of what this says. And it says that in at least five years of such experience, which is progressed in the capacity as a chief administrative officer or assistant chief administrative officer or equivalent management level, I would presume that in our current setup, our assistant chief administrative office position is equivalent to one of our department head positions. So I think the answer to your question would be yes. This has been on the books a long time.
That motion that had to be covered, Mr. Spell. If you'd want to put that in there as department or parish department head, that way, Mr. Forham's question would be covered in your motion.
I was just trying to get a point of clarification.
Okay, well, good, we got to clarify then.
I clarify my motion, Mr. President.
Certainly, Ms. Spell.
My motion is, education experience, paragraph under education shall read, master's degree in public administration, business administration, or a master's level degree in combination with experience in management of parish government operations from an accredited college or university, period. ICMA credentialed manager preferred, period. Additional professional credentials and executive training are desired, period. The experience paragraph as written. That is my motion, Mr. President.
A good clarification for you, Mr. Forham, you feel comfortable with that?
As long as we have that latitude while we're making our evaluations on resumes.
Perfect. Other discussion on that motion? Ms. Griffin, do you want to speak? You okay?
No, I could live with this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, good. Any other discussion, and Mr. Landry had a second, so we're good, you're good with that section? All right, under education experience, I now have a motion and second. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, that passes. All right, I think the rest of these may go rather quickly. Communication skills, do we need to tweak it any at all? I may lump all these in together if you just, if we, if nobody says anything, I may just lump the next ones together and take one motion and we move forward with that.
Mr. Andrew Pott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have heartburn over this, I'm just kind of maybe a point of clarification. Exposure to coastal community environment with experience in emergency disaster planning and implement. Can't say that word, implementation, okay? I don't know why that's in there, and maybe somebody can explain why it is. We have an office of emergency preparedness, and I would think that that guy should be more experienced than that as a parish administrator, that's just my opinion.
Okay, you jumped all the way down to the back page. I was, I was still on the mathematical skills, the, let's see, we just finished education and experience. Okay, kind of threw me off there.
Been a long night, man.
All right, so the whole last group from communication skills all the way through work environment, let's take those in one lump. And the only one at this time that we're discussing is the exposure to coastal community environment with experience in emergency disaster planning and implementation of that. Oh, and you were asking why that might be in there. Mr. Spell?
I don't have a comment to address, Mr. Andrew Pott?
Hang on, then let's stay on this comment. I would go to our parish administrator and ask, in helping to write this up, why did, why did? Is this an important fact?
I think maybe you and Mr. Stelly would be better at answering that question than me. Y'all went through some storms, and you know what you required of this position and what you expected of this position. So I think maybe either you could comment on how important it is for the person in this position to at least be exposed to that, that type of disaster and the planning and whatever that goes along with that.
Mr. Stelly?
Shaking knees. That's a scary place to be.
And in response to that, Mr. Andrew Pott, I would say from going through what we did with Hurricane Rita and having a parish administrator that was quite familiar with our region, our coast, the flooding aspects, where the low-lying areas were, all the experience in the disaster planning, and actually being a communicator with the OEP director was, was something that weighed in pretty heavily during that point in time of experience. Now, this could be something that I don't think we kind of need to, as we, as we take applications, if they have that, fine, but I don't think it's a, kind of a, no, kind of a no or no-go on a situation if they didn't have experience. It's just something that would add to that person's resume if they did.
That's exactly my point, I mean, it, like I said, I don't have heartburn with it.
Yes, sir.
I just find that it's strange that that's a, for lack of a better phrase, a requirement. And that's really what it is, it's a requirement, because it's in black and white down here. But like I say, I'm not gonna dwell on the issue, I just thought it was kind of strange that that had to be. If you're saying it's not a requirement, then I can live with that, but that's a requirement, I mean, you know.
Ms. Stelly?
I just want to make a statement, I just never tried to be a weatherman or a police officer or anything like that in the, what I delivered. You know, I just wanted to, I kept it, the meteorology to the meteorologist and just tried to, my job was to comfort the people, you know, that's. But in the communication skill side, it's, some people come off as being, and I probably find myself in that position sometimes. To have to be able to communicate with someone would be to be able to, to be sympathetic to people's needs, and I think that's part of the communication skills that they're talking about here. Being able to talk to someone in the right manner, at the right time. If some, if someone's being reprimanded, you don't do that in front of people. You reprimand them elsewhere, and I think that's what the communication skills here is all about. Could be wrong, but I think that's what this is.
Thank you, Ms. Stelly, Mr. Landry?
Why don't we just use the word helpful at the end, would be helpful.
I don't.
What do you think?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with any of that, and what we're talking about here is setting the criteria for an administrator, okay? Mr. Stelly was the president of the Caxton Parish Police Jury, just as you were. Y'all were both involved in different storms, but you were active and you were there. I can understand what you just said, and it makes a lot of sense to be able to do that. Why have it for the parish administrator, I don't know. But I mean, like I say, I don't have heartburn over it, and if it needs to be left in there, that's fine with me. I was just questioning why it was in there.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan?
Thank you, Mr. President, maybe, maybe I'm not understanding, which item are we on? Are we on the exposure to coastal community environment?
Yes.
My understanding of that is that it, that it is a requirement, yes. That they have some experience with our Gulf coastline, our hurricanes and our flooding. Simply put, I'd fully expect the administrator, someone who's lived their whole entire life in San Francisco dealing with earthquakes brings nothing to our area. So I do consider that a requirement, specific to our area. Doesn't mean that person is presently living here, but they've had experience with our coastal community environment. Thank you.
Thank you, other discussion? Mr. Spell?
Mr. President, this may be a minor detail, but I would just like to verify that it is a requirement that the next administrator is a resident and taxpayer of Caxton Parish. So I don't know if that's been addressed in here, or maybe I've overlooked it, but I would propose that we address that item.
It doesn't say he has to be a resident in there.
Let's finish with, yeah, finish with kind of this item, then we'll give you that one next, Mr. Spell. You good, Mr. Andrew Pott?
I'm done.
Okay, all right, we're all right on that, I think we're good. Residency, parish residency, anybody got any problems with that? To add that in, that the new administrator be a resident?
I gotta live here, you gotta live here.
Mr. Forham?
Do they have to be a current resident, or do they have to reside here while they, while they take this job?
After he gets the job.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, good, Mr. Scott?
So they don't have to live here at any time at all, they can apply for the job, if they get the job, move here, and that's considered residency?
Yes, sir.
All right, I wouldn't support that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Residency? Okay, that motion, the initial, motion and second to accept, I had, I don't have a motion second to accept these last few items, but I need that, and we can add in that whoever makes a motion on the residency, parish residency must live inside the parish. If that's what y'all see fit. All right. Where else would you live, it's God's country, you're right, I agree with you. All right, starting at communication skills and going all the way through work environment, is there any other tweaking that we need to do to this job description? Mr. Landry?
I still, I would want it to say helpful. I'd make that a form of a motion on the same item we were discussing.
Okay, well, Mr. Landry would like to add that exposure to coastal community environment with experience in emergency disaster planning implementation would be helpful.
Or preferred.
Preferred.
Whatever word you want to use.
Preferred.
Preferred.
Preferred. And that would cover, you, Mr. Andrew Pott?
Yes.
So your motion is to accept those?
Accept it all with that.
Accept it all written with the last word added to that item, one, two, three, number five on page six, preferred. Preference. Good, any other discussion on that? I have, wait, I don't have a second, I got a motion by Mr. Landry, and a second by Ms. Trimmie on finishing up all these items. Discussion. Objection. Oh, Mr. Hassan, discussion about.
Is there a reason why we have to vote on all of this? If he's changing this one, can we vote on that so we don't run into the same problem we did earlier?
Sure.
Sure.
I'll make, well, we'll have to.
Let's make the most, take them all except at one, and then we'll take it separately.
Correct.
Okay. I'm gonna take them all, communication skills, mathematics skills, reasoning ability, certificates of license registration, other qualifications. Okay, leave out under other qualifications, bullet number A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Bullet number G. F, G, all right? So we're not voting on other qualifications, bullet G. We're gonna vote on everything but that, y'all got that? Okay, let me start over. I got a motion second, under all the major categories except under other qualifications. Alphabetize the different paragraphs, the A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Under G, we're gonna take it out right now, and then we can go back and vote on it separately. If I have a motion and a second. Okay, y'all clear with that? Madam Secretary, you clear with that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Spell?
Does that include the residency requirement?
Yes, the residency requirements in that first motion, which was by you, is that good with your motion? Right, Mr. Spell's motion, Mr. Landry's second, was that who it was? I think, who is, Ms. Trimmie? Ms. Trimmie, is that good?
I'll include that. We, and we were talking about after the person would be hired.
Was it your motion? Or his, it was his, wasn't it? Wake up, who made my motion? On the last motion, second.
It was me.
It was Mr. Landry and Ms. Trimmie, okay? You'll include that residency. The only thing we're leaving out is that item G, which we'll go back to. Everybody clear on that motion?
Yes.
Is there any objection to that motion? Is there any objection to that motion? Hearing done, that motion passes. Now, go back to item G, under other qualifications.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept it as written.
Second.
I have a motion. Motion by Mr. Hassan, second by Mr. Scott, to accept as written. Is there any discussion under that motion and second? Okay? Ms. Trimmie.
Well, no, I don't have to discuss that.
Okay.
We just vote one way or the other, and then if it passes, the other's over with.
Then we'll have another motion.
All right.
Okay. The motion, so you know it, yes vote would be to as written, exposure to coastal community environment with experience in emergency slash disaster planning implementation. Now, roll call vote on that one.
This would be a roll call, I mean, a reverse roll call vote, to accept as written that paragraph.
To accept it the way it is would be a yes vote, and to be against it would be a no vote.
That's correct. Mrs. Trimmie?
No.
Mr. Stelly?
No.
Mr. Spell?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
No.
Mr. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Gidry?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Farnum?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
No.
Mr. Brain?
Yes.
Mr. Antipon?
No.
Seven, six, yes.
Seven yeses and six nos, motion carried.
So we leave that in there as it is? That passed.
What are we going to do about Mr. Seis not being here?
Surgery.
Surgery.
All right. So we now have.
Who now?
A job description with all the summaries and essential duties, supervisory responsibilities, and all the other categories now covered. Now, with this meeting tonight, I feel like we've accomplished a lot. I'm ready to stay for another hour or two if we need to, if you want to keep going on other things. But if we're going to stay for a longer period of time, we're fixing to have a little break. So it's up to this jury on which way you want to carry this meeting at this point in time.
Take a break.
All right. Then we'll take, I'd like to have it restricted to a five-minute break, be back here at 10:00 after 8:00, so we can take up other items on this. Five-minute break of this jury, we will reconvene at 8:10. Appropriate action, developing a procedure for filling the vacancy to be created as a result of impending retirement of the parish administrator. We did have a speaker on item 10. I'm going to go ahead and let that speaker come to the microphone, speak on item 10, because we are in an open forum meeting. Mr. Atherton, if you'd like to come at this time and speak to this jury.
Charlie Atherton, 122 Vine Street, Southern Louisiana. The public does appreciate your patience and your deliberations as you go through this process. You don't do it often every 20 or 30 years, so regardless who has the job, you need a job description. My comment would be just on your plan as you move forward. I didn't have a copy of the job description and have, you know, so I just want to talk about the plan itself as you move forward. And I'm looking at it from the impact of whatever happens, as it may or may not affect the public, because all we want is continued, continued good service. So we would like to see your plan again to include a process or a method or something upfront to address issues as they come up. I mean, you now have three, you know, three separate people reporting to you for various issues, but you also may have issues come up with the new parish administrator. And to be fair with the new administrator, you need to have an understanding upfront now before you move, I mean, as your plan moves forward, that when you have issues or concerns, this is the comfortable way that we're going to address these issues, whether it's an issue between the new administrator and the public, or the new administrator and parish employees. I mean, you got an army of them, or the administrator and yourself, or the administrator and your two new appointees that you have. So again, my expectation would be if you had this in place, you're probably never going to use it. But if you don't have some way to address little issues that everybody agrees to upfront, this game could, it could get really ugly. And the bottom line is, the public suffers, because I don't want to deal, you know, I want exactly what we've got now and better. And I've worked where people said, "It's not my job." All they worried about was their day-to-day survival, and they were not going to, not going to be motivated, they're just going to do exactly what they have to do across the board, and we just don't want to do that. It, I mean, so far, it looks like either we shouldn't be letting Mark go, we didn't pay him enough money. And again, I thank you for your deliberations and your time.
Any questions, Mr. Atherton? Thank you, Charlie. Thank you. All right. The next part of our, I guess, conversation tonight would be how are we going to hire our new administrator? What are we, what are we going to do? I think in the last two bullets, we had said something about possibly go ahead and interviewing the assistant administrator for this job, and then we had a lot of comments about going out for resumes and how we might do that. And I'm going to open that discussion up, that once more, we have lively but civil discussion. And please let me call on you to speak, and we'll keep everything in order with that. Mr. Farnum.
It's my opinion that we do take resumes for this position. I think we ought to open it up for resumes or applications, whatever you want to call it, starting on January the 4th, close them on January 29th, give HR department two weeks to sift through the applications and present the viable candidates to the jury for consideration for interviewing. At that point, we have a three-week period and have one, a new administrator picked by March the 5th, and give them a three-week transition period to come into office by the 3rd of April. That's my opinion. Later on, I may put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. We'll give some discussion of that. Could you, could you go back through that one more time? I was trying to write down the criteria, so I'd have it, so we could discuss it. But kind of if y'all wouldn't mind, maybe jot that down, so you'd have it once more?
Open applications on January the 4th, close them on the 29th.
All right.
Turn those applications over to HR to sift through and meet the qualifications that we just approved, and have them submit the viable candidates by the 12th of February.
And it's by 12th of February.
Go through a three-week process of interviews and have an administrator picked by the 5th of March.
Three-week interviews? And 5th of March, March 5th. Okay. There's a start of a plan that we can do a lot of tweaking to and a lot of discussion on. Is that all you have right now, Mr. Farnum?
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Antipon?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Landry was first.
We're not doing it alphabetically?
I'll yield the floor to Mr. Antipon.
Yeah, yield the floor to you, Mr. Antipon. Mr. Antipon, you got a floor.
Oh, okay. I really don't have a problem with what Les is saying. I just want to make sure that we don't crowd ourselves and have to hurry up and get this job done. If it needs to go beyond March the 4th, I think we need to have some latitude in there. The question that I have is, how are we going to advertise for this position? Are we going to go online? Are we going to do journals? How are we going to do this? I think this is an issue that we need to discuss on how we're going to go about doing that. That's my.
We'll get back to that.
My statement.
Okay. And well, that's a whole separate issue, like a bullet that we could, how we're going to advertise. One quote. Thank you. Mr. Farnum, do you want to respond to what Mr. Antipon said?
I can't, actually. I left that part out. I think that we ought to advertise in our Calhoun Parish newspapers and on our website, and that's it. Anybody that wants to apply for this job probably already knows about the job, so we don't have to go out on a nationwide search looking for all this. You advertise locally, and if you don't apply for it, it's too bad for you.
There's his point. With that being said, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't agree with that. I mean, you can have your opinion on people that perhaps would live out of town that wouldn't make a good fit, and I don't know that I would disagree with you, but I wouldn't discriminate against them. Perhaps there's a person that is living in another state that is from here, and I don't know who that may or may not be, but that's what you do when you go through the process of looking at them and making those decisions. I, you know, I don't know how, when you have other department heads that you go on national searches for, why you wouldn't do it for this one. Not to say that you're going to interview or hire one of those people, but I don't see why you would restrict it that much. And I would ask that Ms. Heiser come up. I have a couple of questions for her.
Ms. Heiser. And I think Mr. Farnum wanted to respond to you real quick, if you don't mind.
Sure. Go ahead.
Mr. Farnum, you can respond to that.
I didn't mean to exclude anybody that presently lives out of the parish. I'm just saying advertise locally for that position. Anybody that wants it anywhere in the country could apply for it.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know how they would know about it, but Ms. Heiser, for an department head, I mean, I know, because we've hired people from out of state before, how, just briefly, the process that's gone through, and how do you go about advertising for those positions?
Well, we have had some hard-to-fill or specialized technical positions that we've advertised nationally. Usually, the department will tell us what type of publications that we could advertise in, and then we also do put it, like they said, in the local newspaper, and we would put it on the parish website. Usually, we solicit resumes through that process, and from there, they could, they are screened through, and then we could do the, we have the online employment application right now that they could go ahead and use to put with their resume. Sometimes it gives some additional information that maybe they don't put on a resume, so you might want to think about having both of those documents completed. And from there, I think I heard you say, screen through those that are eligible, but would you want to see all of them, or are you wanting to be screened just to the qualifications that you just approved?
Just to the qualifications, the whole.
And Cheryl, tell the folks that maybe watch it on TV, they don't know who you are, so...
I'm Cheryl Heiser, the Human Resources Director.
Thank you. Mr. Landry.
And obviously, she's very qualified to guide us through the process and how we go about advertising and those things. And I mean, with a little bit of direction from us, I'm sure she would be able to take it over from there.
Yeah, I'd be glad to.
That's what she does, so.
If you want to give us some names of some places that you wanted advertised, or we can gather a list of the places that you might want to advertise it, do you want us to bring that back?
Could you make a suggestion to us? I mean, not, I'm not putting you on the spot right now. I'm just saying you could get back with us, I'm sure, with a suggestion.
I think we could come back with a list. Yeah.
And from what I'm hearing, maybe you could fax us all your search process and where you feel like we ought to advertise that.
Could I give you maybe just a little process, kind of review what I've said here, and maybe some steps for you?
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Spell. Stay right there, Cheryl. There may be some other questions. Ms. Heiser.
Current schedule on the table starts January 4th, so if Ms. Heiser sends us those recommendations, when do we take official action on those recommendations? Are we just taking a chance to review those recommendations and then having Ms. Heiser and her department proceed? That would be a question, Mr. President.
Good question, Mr. Spell, because I don't really have an answer to that one. It's under discussion.
I think it's going to depend on the volume or the response that you get as to whether you come back and say, "We're going to interview all that pass that first screening," or you're going to interview 10, or, you know, that would be part of your process. I think you need to maybe refine a little bit.
And we'd look for your expertise in that. Mr. Antipon?
It's funny she would mention the number 10. I was talking to Les earlier about that, and as I appreciate it, most agency that are seeking to fill a position, have the Human Resource Department narrow them down to the final 10. Of course, Les had a good point, too. How do you decide between 10 and 11? You know, I don't, I don't know how you do that, but that's her job. It's not mine. But the bottom line is that I don't think that we need, as a body, to look at all the applications. I think where you come in is to cull them and to say, "All right, these are the best 10. These are the, these are the names that we're going to submit to you for final approval." And that's my position. That's what I think we should do, narrow it down to 10.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Antipon. Discussion. Who else do I have next? Anybody else? Mr. Stelly.
Is it my understanding Ms. Heiser is going to go through the applications and she's going to narrow it down to 10 people?
I think you need to get a list of all that are qualified from the very start, and then from there, you could cull through. And I mean, as far as timing, I mean, to get all of you together and interviews, that takes a lot of time, and what you're going to ask them in the interview process, I mean...
We, do I still have the floor?
You still have the floor.
Should we not go to an outside firm to narrow down that list based on the qualifications that we've asked for here tonight?
I don't so much.
Well, I'm just trying to understand why we would go through our HR department to do that. If, first off, let me make a public statement. I'm not for going out, period. We've got a man here that's been trained. We've got a man here that can do the job. So I just want to state this publicly again, that I'm not for going out for applications, period. We've got a man that can do the job. But we're going to go through our own HR department to weed out the people who don't meet the criteria? Is that what we're saying?
That's what's being proposed right now. With that real quickly, if I could, Mr. Landry would like to comment on it.
I would say, yes, that's what I'm agreeing to, that Mr. Antipon had said, but at the same time, I mean, anybody here, if you want to look through all the ones that she called through, I mean, I think you would have the right to do that.
But we're putting that, can I answer his?
Yes, Mr. Stelly.
We're putting that burden on Ms. Heiser?
That's what her department does.
For the administrator's position.
That's why I really said I think you might want to get a list of all applicants from the very start that qualify, just from us comparing, you know, the applications to resumes to your job qualifications that you've decided on tonight.
But who's to say we'll have 10 that will qualify with this list of applications that we now have? You know? So we may be worried about something that's not going to happen. Mr. Farnum?
I wouldn't really even have a heartburn with narrowing it down to five. It would make the interviewing process a little more streamlined, and like you said, we could get the whole list of all the people that somewhat met the qualifications, and we'd have a chance to look at them at least, and then go off of y'all's recommendation on who would be interviewed.
Thank you, Mr. Farnum.
And take action from that.
Mr. Hassan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think all we can ask our HR department to do is either qualify them or not qualify them. We can't ask them to narrow it down, because that is our job in the interview process. We're in a situation where if it's eight or 80, we as a jury are gonna have to do that in that process. We can't ask her to narrow those down. That's what you do in an interview. So I think it's just gonna be, what we achieved part of it tonight by setting that criteria, it gives her the ability to sift, and then we go from there. Thank you.
Your point. Mr. Spell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I guess I agree with Mr. Hassan. If the candidates meet the qualifications that we have defined, Ms. Heiser and her department present those qualified candidates to this jury, we evaluate that in executive session and move forward with candidates from that point. That's my opinion, Mr. President. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Spell.
Discussion. Other discussion.
So. We, uh...
May I make a comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Underpont.
Why don't we use Mrs. Heiser's recommendation? This is what she does on a daily basis, day in, day out, and here we are trying to dictate to her how it ought to be done. I think she ought to be dictating to us how it ought to be done. And I think we covered that, and I don't have a problem with just her recommendations and go with that. That's what, I think that's what Ellis said.
You just agreed with Ellis. That's what he said.
Yeah, I just reworded it.
I got Spell in, oh.
So, would you all like to put that in form of a motion?
I would.
All right. The motion is, well, hang on just a second. Maybe not, maybe not a motion on, remove that motion if you don't mind. Let's discuss a little bit more, because we need to get a little more clarification on, Ms. Heiser, I think the advertisement is something that definitely has to be discussed, and maybe we would like some clarification on, from this jury, on how we want to handle that. So with that being said, I would open for comments to that. Mr. Forham.
Do you have some recommendations on timelines?
Well, I'm not sure about national publications. I mean, you're gonna, you know, when we advertise in the local newspaper, we usually do it Sunday to Sunday. I mean, you have to get your, we don't put an entire job description in a notice. We frame it down some, and, you know, you have to get it to the newspaper. You have to get them to say how much it's gonna cost to run. I mean, all of those things take time. Somebody has to approve what's being put in the paper. Are we talking about a personnel committee to do that? Are we talking about allowing us to run that, or run it by Hal, or, you know, I mean, there are review processes with all of these things. I mean, everything, you could probably add a week to everything that's, it's...
I guess that's just what we're looking for, is recommendations on what is a feasible plan, something that you guys could live by.
I think we could try to put a timeframe together for you with the steps that we see would be required.
Okay. Thank you.
Within the confines of the dates that you're trying to meet, to the extent that we could. And I'd have to get those from Kathy, because I didn't write them all down on my paper tonight when y'all were going through your little timeframe.
And those are flexible.
Oh, yeah. It's just an idea. It's just a format to look at. Discussion. More discussion. Other discussion. Ms. Heiser on, okay, oh. I think there was some discussion, and I'd like to maybe just throw this out here on whether we go nationwide, or whether we go statewide, or exactly, I mean, if you have the internet, that's a national search. I just kind of want the pulse of this group. Do we feel comfortable on a nationwide search? Or do we want to go, because I'm hearing other people say, keep it local, keep it statewide. What's y'all's opinion on that? I think that's something we need to hash through to give Ms. Heiser some direction. Mr. Brain.
I think if, if we're gonna accept, you know, make, you know, agree to accept the applications, that we do it locally.
Define local.
Well, local newspaper, paper, parish, or in website, because the website is national. If you want to go national, I mean, if somebody from New York could see our website and apply for the job, that happening is very unlikely. But if we're gonna hire, you know, if we're gonna go through the hiring process of hiring a new administrator, it needs to be local only, in my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Underpont.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Chris. I don't think that, I don't know how we can restrict it to just this area or that area. I got a real problem with that. I'm, I think that defeats the purpose, quite frankly. Are you?
Thank you. Discussion. I got a couple different opinions. Mr. Scott.
I don't, I know how we restrict it. We don't take resumes. That's how we restrict it. And I keep getting this thing in my ear, and, you know, it's always about that person's doing a great job. Let's take their recommendation and run with it until we get back to this one spot. And to me, it's just so contradicting. We got the guy, I ain't even gonna say his name, because we have the man here that can take care of this job. We've been, the recommendations have come down, and we've taken recommendations forever and ever, and we don't always agree with them. Let's vote on it right now, take resumes, resumes or not, and then we can decide after that if we even need to do it. I would, I would think that's the easiest thing to do. Vote, resumes or not, we know where we all stand at that point, and then we can decide from that point how the resumes are gonna go. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Spell. Pardon me? Who would like to speak? You be assigned. Mr. Forham.
That's an excellent point. I would make that into a motion right now that we take resumes for this position.
I would second.
I withdraw my. All right. So we're gonna clear that up right now.
That's if it's irrelevant, if that don't pass.
I withdraw my second, Mr. President. So, a motion and a second to take resumes for this job position. Okay? We'll vote on that. That, we'll see how that passes. We have a motion on the floor, by Mr. Forham, seconded by Mr. Underpont. Do you take resa, uh, resumes?
I'm ready to get out of Dodge. I'll take a resume.
Resumes, you want to throw in nationwide, or statewide, or what do you want to do on your?
We'll define how, after this.
After it passes, yes or no?
Cheryl decide that.
Resumes. Motion, take resumes. And a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
The last one was a reverse roll call, so this will start with Mr. Underpont.
Yes.
Mr. Brain?
No.
Mr. Collins?
No.
Mr. Forham?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Guidry?
Yes.
Mr. Hassan?
No.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Mr. Spell?
Yes.
Mr. Stelly?
No.
Mr. Sia, I'm sorry. Mrs. Trimmie?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight yeses and five nos. The motion carried to take resumes.
All right. Eight yeses, five nos. We're gonna take resumes. There we go. All right. With that being said, Ms. Heiser, come back to the microphone. Can you give us a criteria on taking resumes for this job with this job description, for that job with this job description, for the administrator of this parish? And when can you get that back to this jury at a date that we could all make sure?
When you say criteria, you're talking about steps in the process?
Yes.
In the process, including advertising, receiving, calling through?
Is that what y'all would like to have her do? Can you be a little more specific, Mr. Landry?
An outline of, all of the process that she just mentioned, yes. And including, if we do go nationally, how would you suggest that that would work, or do, you know, yeah, the internet's there, but you know what? You gotta know the web address, and you gotta know there's a job opening, or you may never go to that web address. So I don't call that nationally. Statewide, I'm assuming you would put an ad in, you know, the New Orleans, Baton Rouge, Lafayette, all the main metro areas in the state should cover.
Workforce Commission site, some of those, civil service type.
So could you just outline that process for us and fax it to us?
Thank you. Mr. Forham. Thank you.
Is, you know, like hotjobs.com, and there's several nationwide places. Everybody that applies for jobs in this world, go to the internet and they look up jobs all over the world. And, I don't know, there's probably more than just three or four of those sites. Is that something that y'all would use?
Yes.
Well, I would really recommend that you go with ICMA or something that's related to parish government that you're trying to recruit from. You get anybody that's, you would get such a mountain of applications that, you know, those types, I mean, they're just too, too broad. I was saying, we could come back with a list of maybe national affiliated websites that would make more sense for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Spell.
Mr. President, our meeting in January is on January 7th. We're requesting to start advertisement on the 4th. What mechanism will trigger Ms. Heiser and her department to go out for advertisements on the 4th before our January 7th meeting?
This 2009 calendar will trigger that, and that was the next thing I was gonna bring up, but thank you for mentioning that. With that being said, Mr. McMurray.
Two things. I really don't think you can do that January 4th, which I think is your point. You certainly need to approve whatever you're gonna do. And God, I hate to bring this up, but if you look at your fourth page of your job description that you've just approved, the fourth paragraph says, "Personal historical and cultural knowledge of the police jury in the community of southwest Louisiana." So if that's gonna, if that's part of your job description, it might have some implication as to what you, you know, whatever format or venue you use. And I think really what Mr. Forham brought up when you first, if I heard you write, when you, the first thing you brought up about local newspapers and the website would easily satisfy that particular qualification, but I just want to call your attention, that's in your approved job description.
Okay. Mr. Hassan. Do we have a motion on the floor at this point? No, actually, I don't know if we need one yet. I was gonna try to find out. Go ahead. Make a motion if you'd like.
I'd like to make a motion. We were, we advertise on the webs, post it on the website, advertise in local newspapers throughout Calcasieu Parish, and that's it.
All right. I got a motion to advertise on local websites, post it throughout Calcasieu Parish, and that's it. Seconded by Mr. Brain. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Heiser, point of clarification. What is the percentage of department heads that we have actually hired out of state?
Um, I don't think there are any, are there? Randy Vincent came from out of state when he was recruited. Is there anybody else more?
He's like me, Andrew.
Yes, he's from here.
Mr. McMurray.
Randy Vincent was living out of state when he was hired, but he's a.
Right, right.
Your animal control director came from Arkansas.
Right.
And the previous facility manager came from out of state.
Mr. Polley.
Of course, I mean, you know, Jimmy Vickers was a resident of, I mean, he was a native of Mississippi. He was actually living in Calcasieu Parish when he moved from MCal over to the police jury. So I, I think that would, make that pretty well.
So I take it, Mark, it's not a large number, and we've been pretty successful in some of the hires that we've made locally. Am I correct in saying that, Ms. Heiser?
I think so.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guidry. We got a motion second on the floor.
I just said one thing.
Oh, Ms. Trimmie.
Yeah. And, and the motion is just our website and local newspapers? Is that what your motion is?
That's correct.
Okay. The only problem that I see with that is, is that, I wouldn't have a problem with that if we would also advertise in the Louisiana, state of Louisiana, local newspapers, like the Times-Picayune, Baton Rouge Advocate, Shreveport, Lafayette, the major, the major areas where people of that substance will look at those type of things, and I'm sure the phones will ring across 64 parishes, so.
So Ms. Trimmie, you ask?
That's the only problem I have with that one. If I voted no, it would only be because I think it should encompass Louisiana.
Thank you, Ms. Trimmie. Mr. Brain.
Ms. Trimmie, I agree to you to an extent. It's just that the cost factor to me to run an ad in 64 parish.
I didn't say that.
No, okay.
Just in Louisiana. She basically saying, advertise only in the larger metropolitan areas of Louisiana, which would be Shreveport, Monroe, Alexander, Lake Charles, Lafayette, Baton Rouge, New Orleans.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
I would amend my motion to include that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll agree.
So, the major metropolitan areas in Cal, in the state of Louisiana and here locally. Okay. Mr. Forham.
I got one more suggestion.
All right.
The Louisiana Police Jury Association website also.
Mr. Hassan, would you like to add that to your motion?
I'll accept that.
Okay. Now, from what I'm hearing, we're gonna go out for advertisement locally on all the major metropolitans in Louisiana, which that covers locally, our website and the police jury website. I have a motion and a second on that. Everybody clear with that? Any other discussion on that motion? Roll call vote, Madam Secretary. Yes, is a yes vote to go out in the state of Louisiana locally website. We understand no is to do something different. Everybody's clear on that? All right. Roll call vote, Madam Secretary. Which way?
Sir, it's a reverse this time. Excuse me. Mrs. Trimmie?
Yes.
Mr. Stelly?
No.
Mr. Spell?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Dr. Mackey?
No.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Guidry?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Forham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Brain?
Yes.
Mr. Underpont?
Yes.
Motion carried, 10 to 3.
Nine, three. Okay. We've given you some direction now, Cheryl.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Hassan.
Is there any reason, thank you, Mr. President, is there any reason we have to wait? This advertising can begin now, so possibly by January 4th, we are already receiving. I understand what you were saying earlier, but we've set the criteria. We've set the, we've set the standard. She's gonna do the advertising of it. There's nothing else for us to do until she starts getting resumes and then we, and sifting through them for us.
Mr. Forham.
Do you have a recommendation on how long of a period of time that we advertise?
Well, the only thing I would say is I do think I need some point of contact, I guess, for this, because like I said, you know, to put this entire four-page job description in a newspaper, in a want ad, or whatever legal section is, will be huge. We usually condense it down, you know, and so I would need somebody to say, yes, this is representative of, you know, the ad that we want in the eight or nine or 10 papers, and we could get the list of those. So, I mean, could I, I mean, I know, I appreciate you giving me instruction here, but can I have someone that can okay that?
Is four weeks too long?
Well, it's holiday time.
I mean, if we waited until after the first of the year, is four weeks too long of a time, or is that not long enough?
I think we could get the ads in the paper within like a two-week period, and then you can run it. I mean, you usually pick a specified period of time to run it, and I mean, not too long, but not too short.
If we waited until after the January 7th meeting to approve what was gonna go in the ad, start running it maybe on the 11, would three weeks be plenty of time?
I think so.
Thank you. And you had, y'all were back and forth, so I'm gonna let you go to the floor. You want to yield, Ms. Griffin?
I'll yield to Ms. Griffin.
Ms. Griffin.
I do not, I don't want the floor. Thank you anyway. I was praying the doc wanted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Dr. Mackey?
I'm just trying to simplify possibly. Would it be possible for us to have a little ad in some of the newspapers that simply say, "The criteria is on our website," so that they could then get on the website and see if they want to apply or not, rather than us try to put it in a newspaper thing, just say, "We're looking for applications. The criteria are on our website."
I think we could paraphrase the qualifications and then certainly make a reference to the website, or to contact our department for the job description or something like that.
I think if the guy can't get through the job description, we don't need to hire him. If he can't realize that he can go to the small ad, get to the website, get the criteria, and be assertive enough to do that, then he's not our man. Mr. McMurray?
I just want to say, with the level of specificity that y'all are operating under tonight, I would not want to have a paraphrased ad. I think Dr. Mackey's.
I think Dr. Mackey's suggestion is entirely appropriate, that we simply refer, show that there is, there is an opening and refer, uh, if somebody can't pull up the website, they don't have any business with that.
Exactly what I said.
And, and refer that. That way, there is no, you start paraphrasing that and certain prejudices get into the advertisement. I, with y'all's discussion night, I'd much prefer there simply to be a reference, that there's a job opening, refer to the, uh, website, which will contain this set of qualifications verbatim, and there will be no, uh, ifs, ands, and buts, or any confusion about anything.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Mr. Brain?
Mark, would that be a substantial, uh, cost less?
Oh, yeah, 'cause you're talking about very, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Fornum?
Would there be any kind of issues with legally about restricting applications through our website only? Put an ad that says, "Applications accepted" on our CPPJ.net site only?
Um, I don't think there's any legal issue with that. I, I don't know the, I guess I don't understand.
That way, all the applications are in the same exact format. Might make it easier for our screening process if every application comes through our website.
Well, I guess that, that brings up a question, if I could, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. President. Y'all have been talking about accepting resumes, and now you're introducing the word "application" to that, so.
The resume is attached to the application.
Well, I mean, we have a standard application, which is available on the website. It's just, it's a standard application, anybody applying for anything from a custodial worker, any other job, would fill this out. So if that's, if, if you're requiring the application in addition to the resume, that would be the appropriate thing to fill out, and then they could attach, I guess, a PDF or whatever of their, of the Word document or whatever of their, of their resume. So that what you're suggesting is that all, anyone interested in the position and applying for it would do that online, there would be no hard copy, uh, they wouldn't be able to mail it, is that?
I'm guessing that's just a question on my part. Would it make the process more streamlined, easier to manipulate the data, uh, easier to go through from HR standpoint?
I'm not sure if you can do attachments, I mean, because the application is strictly a fill-in and submit document.
Okay, that probably wouldn't work in this case.
They can't do a, they, they can't do an email cover to the application and attach a document.
Jessica shaking her head, no, I don't.
Uh, if you come on the microphone, uh, to discuss this, whoever might could answer that question.
Well, it's kind of a yes or no, either they can do it.
Jason, name it in, in the opposition.
Jason Barnes, Special Programs Coordinator and overseeing the website. The website form that was created, uh, through the Human Resources Department was a form that was specifically made in a PDF format, and actually, the, the lines and the, the fill-in areas were, were specifically made electronically. And so it's a submit, as Cheryl said, it's a submit-type situation. There's no area where you can attach anything to it, it's just basically filling out that one form and submitting it in. And I am not sure as to our technical capabilities on our website if we can modify that in any way, because the website is not necessarily designed for those purposes.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray.
I think that we would have to require, in addition to submittal of that PDF application, we would have to require also, uh, either electronic or snail-mail, uh, version of a resume. I mean, you, you're, our application is not gonna tell you those things that you really need to know, it's more of a formal thing, but I mean, you're, you're gonna want, in fact, sometimes the structure of the resume has a lot to do with what you think about that individual, so you're gonna want a resume.
We usually ask them to submit it to the PO box here.
So you're, you're basically doing hard copies of resume instead of electronic? I know that we do a lot of electronic.
Well, other than find a central point for them to go to, you know, it usually just comes to the post office box, and then we can gather all of them.
They couldn't mail it in with an attachment, electronic attachment to their, with their resume as they fill out an application?
They could do it the other way. They could fax it or email it, and then hard copy the application off of the website, fill it in, and attach it with it.
Just so we make sure they're clear in the instructions that they need to do?
And there is an HR, um, departmental email that they could send to.
Mr. McMurray?
I don't think you want faxes, because there's certain confidentiality issues there. I think you want, you want them to mail the resume in care of the HR department specifically out in the envelope, just like we do on our bids. We require, if someone submits a bid, they have to put on the outside of the envelope that this is a bid, so that it is not opened by some unauthorized person, person. So I think, you know, we would just need to put in the advertisement the instructions to go to the website, and on the website, it would, it would not only give these qualifications, but it would give the instructions on how to fulfill the requirements for applying for the position. And that would spell out a, you know, they could, they could use the website to fill out the application, they could send hard copies directly to the HR department in hard copy, and put, tell them what has to be included on the outside of the envelope, so it's identified as a, as, as what it is, and it's not just some piece of mail coming. I mean, we get thousands of pieces of mail, so we need to be able to specify what that, what's inside that envelope, so that it goes directly to Cheryl.
Thank you.
And I think we can cover, we can do that on y'all's behalf of putting the requirements on how to submit this.
On the website.
In, in the website, yeah.
Mr. Landry?
I was just gonna say, I mean, you know, this isn't an hourly employee that we're hiring, this is a special position, and I don't know that the, the application online even would really apply. I mean, do we even, really even need to have that filled out? And we just want a resume sent.
A resume that meets the qualifications and criteria of what we've outlined tonight.
Exactly. I think filling out the, the online application is just kinda irrelevant, I don't, I think it's just a waste of time.
I would think so, too.
You should just direct them to, to do as Mark said, mail the direction of, of the, uh, resume to the PO box, and that's it.
So what we're looking at doing is, go ahead, Mr. McMurray.
Chris, there's some things on the application that deal, I mean, all the equal employment opportunity data and everything, I, I think it's not a bad.
And you actually get a signature that what they're telling you is true and correct. That's, that's the thing about that.
Yeah. I mean, they could, they could go to the website and print out the resume and send it in with the, I mean, print out the application and send it in with the resume.
That's right.
I mean, it's not rocket science, I can do that.
One other little piece that you might wanna consider is that, um, it could be somebody that would want to apply for that job, that doesn't want anybody to know that they're applying for that job. And as a public body, I'm not really sure that you can necessarily honor that request for confidentiality. So, um, I mean, if the media, that becomes a public record at the point it hits our office. And so if the media wants to have a listing and copies of all those resumes, I suspect that, uh, we're gonna be obligated to provide it, just, just something you might wanna think about.
So could we print out the application and send in, send it in with a hard copy of a resume?
Yes.
That's easy enough? Put the qualifications on the website? They can't print out a application and fill it out and put it in with their hard copy? I don't know if that's our person anyhow. So, there we go. I think we'll be okay with that. Uh, timeline and getting the outlined points, uh, that we talked about earlier, and to get with Mr. Spell and, and trying to do this. I know this is our last meeting of this year, and the next meeting's not till the 7th, but, uh, guys, this is very important, and if we need to reconvene on a special meeting, we'll do it. Uh, so with that being said, uh, Ms. Heiser, could you give us some criteria on when you think you could get this information back to us, and we can maybe look at setting a date?
Um, are you wanting me to have a draft and then fax it out, and then y'all would review it, or?
Pardon me? I, I mean, I'm, I'm looking for input from this group, I'm, I'm not a sole source opinion maker. Mr. Andrew Pott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe, my, my personal opinion is that once Mrs. Heiser has everything in order, we need to call a special meeting and review this publicly, instead of sending everybody a copy, and we all have different opinions about what she's recommending, that sort of thing. We come back and we do exactly what we're doing here tonight, fresh it out and come up with a final decision. I don't, I don't think faxing it is gonna, is gonna solve anything, that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Spell?
Mr. President, please excuse me, but I do have a question to address to Mr. Smith on the advertisement and resumes middle. Do I need to wait until this is addressed, or?
Oh, go ahead, we'll let you get out.
This is addressing Mr. McMurray's comments, but Mr. Smith, would we be following the law if we submitted names to the media? In other words, are we, we're not required to provide social security number, birthplace, all of that personal information? Man, I just, I don't want us to be in a position where we just turn over a resume and application to the media.
No, I don't think, that's not what I do.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that's clear, so there's no misunderstanding.
I think there's some chance that when resumes come in, you can submit if the, if the, uh, if the media wants to know who has submitted an application or a resume, I think you can give them that. Mr. McMurray and I have a little difference of opinion, he may be right, but when you are considering a person's qualifications for a personnel, for, for a position, I think that that allows you to, to consider those in private, in an executive session. Uh, now, those things become public record at such time, perhaps that a selection is made, but in the meantime, I'm not certain that those, uh, those resumes would be available for publication, but Mr. McMurray has more experience in that than I do.
Well, there's no difference of opinion there. I, I was not suggesting that we have to publish the resumes. My point was that the names of those people applying is a matter of public record, and, and so that, and, and the point there is that a lot of times, people wanting to consider a job, particularly in the private sector, if they work for one bank and they're looking at, uh, being hired by another bank, they don't want the bank they're working for to know they're doing that. You can get away with that in the private sector, but we're not, I don't think we're able to do that. But no, that, we don't have to, social security numbers and all the data that's on that, no, that is not, that would not be a matter of public record.
Thank you. Okay. With that being said, we don't have a motion or a second on the floor of anything that we need to vote on.
No.
I think our criteria is set on where we're gonna advertise that, how Cheryl's gonna do it. Basically, what we need to do is come back once she has the information and let us review it, and then we can tweak that, and then she can start the application process. Don't move that. Yes?
Um, maybe I, maybe I don't understand that. I, if, if all we're going to do is to create a small ad directing, announcing the, the opening and directing people to our website, I'm not sure what about that y'all would necessarily need to approve. Okay with that, if you wanna approve the, the one-inch ad that says that, but in, in terms of, in terms of time, here we are a week before Christmas and the New Year period, um, you know, that could be done relatively quickly without having to wait for a meeting. What we would need to know, however, which may or may not be, be decided tonight, is a timeframe as to how many days of, uh, of eligibility, you know, what, what would be the deadline for having those resumes and applications submitted? And then, you know, you got some time at that point to decide what you do after you get them in, and now you're gonna go through that process and how the screening goes and all, but, but in terms of, uh, in terms of timing of how long someone would have to respond to those ads, I think it'd be, we would need to know that, because we, that would have to be in the ad. You have until X number, you have until January X in order to, uh, have that turned into the HR department.
Thank you, Mr. Spell.
But I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know about y'all, if y'all think you need to approve the little ad we're talking about, that's okay, but I don't know that there's anything about that that would be, you know, complicated.
Mr. Spell?
Mr. President, just a comment, I'm, I'm extremely comfortable with Ms. Heiser and her department putting that ad together and, um, proceeding forward, so that's just my personal comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spell. Ms. Trimmie?
I, I just did tell Mr. Spell, I, I agree with what Mr. McMurray said.
Thank you, Ms. Trimmie. Anyone else? So, Mr. Hassan?
I'll make a motion that we move forward, there's no reason for us to meet again, that we move forward with, uh, her taking that ad and doing what she needs to do.
Y'all, I got, I need a second. Second by Mr. Spell. Write it down.
Well, I wrote down run for three weeks.
We're gonna come into some discussion. We gotta, your motion was for her.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I wouldn't include Mr. Fornum's date, and I have it written down somewhere, I believe 20, the 29th of January as a deadline to have, is that correct?
To close?
Yeah, so all resumes, it needs to be in that ad, that all resumes would need to be received.
I think we might reference that, it's a pretty long time.
Is that too?
Well, I wrote down that y'all said run for three weeks in the papers. Are you saying that you want it run for, in the ads for that period of time, or you want the three weeks from the beginning of the month to the end to solicit the applications? Resumes?
Well, I mean, if, my, my understanding was that we would advertise for those three weeks, but for the next three weeks or whenever you can get those into the, but we would give till the 29th to receive those.
Okay.
That we give time, somebody sees the ad on the last day to still submit.
Mr. McMurray?
I, I think your original date, if I understood it, that, that culminated on the 29th, was not running ads until sometime in early January, is that right? So, I mean, if we can get, if the ad could be.
You're ratchet everything.
If the ad could be published next week, then we're ahead of that by over a week. So I don't know, I mean, if, if, if you wanna back that up, you run the ad for three weeks, but that deadline be the same period of time from the 4th, January 4th to the 29th, is that what?
22nd would be the week ahead of that.
So, um.
So we close on the 22nd?
Mr. Hassan, I'm gonna go to, uh, and basically, I think our, and, and just maybe in, in reviewing some of this, once that closes, our biggest timeframe that we'll have then will be reviewing the applications to make sure that we, you know, I think that's where we need time. So if we get this in, in the hopper really quickly, that we get the ads out there, we could back that originally 29th date up, and that would give us more time to, uh, look through and cull and, and find the best candidate. So, with that being said, oh, I'm gonna go to Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just gonna suggest, I don't know why it's the 29th and 22nd, please pick either the 31st of January or the 15th of January. I mean, to me, that just makes, I, I don't know why, we have a meeting on the 29th, I don't know, or do we?
No, 29th.
On the wrong year, sorry. I mean, I would either go through the end of January or possibly the mid, January 15th would probably be long enough.
I think so. Get the last.
I think if we can get the ad in next week, I, I would agree with that. And then I think the other thing is just so we're clear as to whether that deadline is a deadline for a postmark or whether it has a deadline for receipt, so.
I would say a postmark. Postmark, January 15th? Okay, let me, you wanna put that in your motion?
Yes.
And Mr. Spell, second, postmark, January 15th?
I'm not sure why we're changing from the 29th to the 15th.
We're moving up to next week.
We're getting that, we're going ahead and getting it out quicker, that's why. One second. Thank you. Discussion. Who else we got over there? Mr. Fornum?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I, I picked, the dates I picked were Fridays, that was the reason I picked those dates, and they were just suggestions anyway. So, the 15th, if we're gonna get it out next week, and, and Ms. Heiser said that three weeks was plenty sufficient for this thing to run, so that's, uh, that falls in the three-week timeframe, so.
Legal counsel, I hope you've been listening to that motion, 'cause I might ask you to sum it up for us.
Afraid I got a new job.
Yes, you do.
As I understand it, the police jury has designated Ms. Heiser as the person to put together an ad, which will run in the papers that you all have already decided, which are the major papers in the state of Louisiana, particularly all the papers in this parish, uh, and on our website and on the Louisiana State Police Jury website. Those ads will refer to our website, where we have a job application, and we will also have posted all of the qualifications that you all have passed tonight. That will, uh, that ad will also say that applications and the, uh, resumes must be postmarked no later than January the 15th. A January 15th postmark passes, a January 16th postmark is thrown out. That's the way I understand what you all have said so far.
Mr. Hassan, do you agree with that motion?
Absolutely.
Mr. Spell, second. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, motion carries. I think we have.
Thank you, Ms. Heiser.
A good path forward. I wanna thank everybody on this jury for your hard work, your due diligence, and your, uh, good manner back and forth amongst us. I think we've shown the public that we are, uh, forthright in moving forward with this project. That I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by Dr. Mackey, second by Mr. Andrew Pont. We stand adjourned.